Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Regular Meeting for July 5, 2022. I hope everybody had a great Fourth of July. City Clerk, could you please do the roll call?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Robertson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers On.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmembers On, can you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a proclamation tonight. Councilmember Stokes, I was wondering if you could read that for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our community, and whereas these programs provide places for people of all cultures together, celebrate, and volunteer their time and talents to make a difference, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities, and aid in the prevention of chronic disease, and improve the mental and emotional health of all residents, and whereas people with disabilities benefit with opportunities and choices for recreation, socialization, and learning to facilitate participation in the life of our community, and whereas parks and recreation programs also enhance a community's economic prosperity through the increased property values and tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reductions, and whereas our parks and natural areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors, and whereas Bellevue's parks, trails, and natural areas saw a significant increase in use during the pandemic, as residents sought opportunities to stay active and healthy, and whereas, as a city in the park, Bellevue's parks and natural recreation areas are fundamental, not only to the beauty of our community, but also to the environmental well-being by improving air and water quality, protecting groundwater, preventing flooding, and providing vegetative buffers and habitat for wildlife. Now therefore, I, behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month in Bellevue, and urge everyone to enjoy and recognize the many benefits of our parks, natural areas, trails, and recreations. Get out and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion to approve the agenda? Second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are eight speakers signed up for oral communications, and I'll remind the public that oral communications is for a period of no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will -- oh, and each speaker will be allowed three minutes. And with that, I'll call our first speaker, who's joining us, I believe, in person, and that is Brady Nordstrom.
Good evening. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Brady Nordstrom, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the East Side Housing Roundtable. So, we are a broad coalition comprised of employers, nonprofits, businesses, housing advocates, private and nonprofit housing developers, and we unite to support the creation of more housing and diverse housing types across all income levels in the East Side. And this is especially critical at a time of rapid job and transit expansion. So, my primary purpose for being here today is to just express deep appreciation for the city's foresight and willingness to undergo this next right work for affordable housing. We recognize and praise this as a new approach for setting the city's Affordable Housing Work Plan over the next 12 to 18 months. So, and within this, this includes this collaboration engagement with a broad set of stakeholders, and working with inexperienced consultants to help navigate. There's a lot of challenges with creating housing, both with the urgency and just across all affordability levels. So, there's a lot to balance throughout all of this, but ultimately, it's going to be your choice as council. And so, as you consider this next right work, we urge you to think about some of the following. First is impact. Prioritizing the highest impact policies to increase housing affordability. So, for example, an ambitious and appropriate increase to residential capacity in strategic locations is really a foundation for other policies to work. Another point is transit orientation. Maximizing present and future transit-oriented opportunities, such as Willburton and Belred. Revenue is another piece. Just recognizing that additional revenue is needed for lower affordability levels. And finally, time. Considering that priorities can be -- well, considering priorities that can be implemented in tandem and/or quickly, because time is a variable of the success, and just keeping in mind that there's partners here to support and find ways to expand capacity. So, that's pretty much it. Really thank you all for -- and as Roundtable members, we are engaging in a lot of hard conversations around these complex topics, and we recognize that this is really going to impact future generations in big ways. So, we look forward to continuing our work with you and with staff to advance housing affordable to all income levels. So, thank you again, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nordstrom. The next speaker is Christian Dorsett, who I believe is joining us virtually. Mr. Dorsett, I do not see you identified by name. If you are participating under a different name, can you please use star nine to raise your hand? Okay, I do not see Mr. Dorsett. Moving on to the next speaker is Ryan Donahue. Mr. Donahue is also joining us virtually. Mr. Donahue, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you. Your time begins now.
Hello, Mayor Robinson, and members of the council. I apologize for not being there in person today. My name is Ryan Donahue, and I am the Chief Advocacy Officer at Habitat for Humanity, Seattle, King, and Kittitas Counties, as well as the co-chair of the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. The EHC, as you may know, is a group comprised of over 35 organizations representing housing providers, direct service providers, faith leaders, community members, and advocates who are working to meet the needs of our neighbors, addressing the need -- sorry, who are working to provide affordable housing to the City of Bellevue and other cities along the East Side. We're working to meet the needs of our neighbors and addressing the necessity for a significant increase in the number of affordable homes available to people living in East King County. I'm here today to talk about the next right work effort that is set to come up on your agenda a little bit later. I want to start off by specifically making sure to thank both the consultant, AP Heard, as well as your planning staff. We were afforded multiple opportunities to discuss our thoughts on the affordable housing needs for Bellevue, and we do deeply appreciate that engagement. That being said, however, I would urge you to look very closely at this report. In your presentation, you will see that there was a wide variety of topics that were proposed, many of which landed on the consultant's report in that little blue chart there at the end. Sadly, however, of those 16 items that were determined to have a high degree of support and impact, only four were included in the final recommendations. That's only 25%. You've heard myself and others call on the City of Bellevue to take bold action, but 25% simply doesn't meet that standard. It's not to say that the four on this list aren't good. We're strongly in support of all four of these suggested recommendations, from implementing a commercial linkage fee, to removing barriers to microapartments, to allowing higher FARs for affordable residential projects, and reducing permit fees for affordable housing projects. These are all good things and should be pursued, but even by the analysis of the planning staff and consultant, only one of those four is considered high impact, and two of them are considered low impact. We are in a housing crisis right now, and bold action needs to be taken today. I know some of the items in this report are classified as being an ongoing work or in the broader comprehensive plan. I'm glad to hear that there is some movement, but it's too easy to say that something is simply ongoing and then lose track. I would urge the council to conclude more of the topics from the consultant's report as part of our next right work, including inclusionary zoning, to require the production of affordable housing, completion of the 2017 housing strategy that particularly around C1, establishment of a fund dedicated to increase the production of affordable housing, and changing codes to allow DADUs, ADUs, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and mechanisms for separate ownership in all zones. I would also urge you to grow the planning department to reflect that amount of work that needs to be done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue. The next speaker is joining us in person. That is Marguerite Richard.
Good day. My name is Marguerite Richard, and I come all the way from Seattle, Washington. And I have a few things on my mind. Well, I always have things on my mind because of the fact that I have to address government, but I don't think that there should be any fear involved in that. So, I'll tell you about a scenario in the day in the life of an indigenous black female living in Seattle. So, I'm sitting on the first floor because the seventh floor is still not open to the public. I'm waiting with Honorable Michael B. Fuller to go upstairs to speak at the council meeting. A foreigner guard comes up to us and say, "You can't sit here." I was like, "What?" I said, "We're going to the council meeting. It's canceled." There was no canceled meeting. I said, "Well, I'm going in the elevator." "No, you can't go in there." I was like, "See ya, wouldn't want to be here." And that, right there, was enough to really, I guess, cause a major explosion. Then today, Claudia Balladucci, which you're all familiar with, she says, "Mr. Shard, you can't say that." "Say what?" All I do is do -- I go to Bellevue. They don't tell me I can't say that. Say what? So, now I'm really, really, really beyond reason. I'm always, like I said, consciously thinking, "What should I do next?" Because this kind of stuff has to stop. It's called malicious harassment, and there's laws attached to that. So, I'm really concerned, and I always will be, because of the fact that we are supposed to have free speech. And then when you start getting into all those other little isms and stuff, that's where those name-callings come from, like Nazi pig, psychopath, whatever you want to call yourself in terms of what you're trying to do to someone that has a right to be here. Everybody has the right to the tree of life. Nobody has the right to harm another person. Just look what happened on the Fourth of July. Back in the heydays, that was really kind of like a bad thing for indigenous black people still locked in chains. And it's a shame to have to come to any council meeting, town hall meetings, whatever you want to call it, where you're using those same kind of chains on us to do what? I mean, I'm just still in shock. I'm still trying to think of how Ms. Balladucci should be handled, because Kathy Lambert did that same thing, and she is no longer around anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. The next speaker on the list is Alex Zimmerman.
Zihail, my dirty, damn Nazi fascist mob bandita and psychopath. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to speak about Amazon Mafia. I want to speak about Amazon Mafia for many reasons, because I lived here for 35 years. And for 35 years, what has I seen? What has I seen? Amazon and Microsoft, too, from beginning, and I talk about this story a year ago, destroy us totally. So, it's not because it's my personal opinion, like professional opinion, you know what it means, like a business consultant. It's because I totally respect President Trump, what he's talking, so we need to stop in tech. They -- companies like Amazon, Google, Microsoft, they destroy a fundamental principle of America. What has happened for the last two years under COVID has shown they want to make from America concentration camp, when people cannot speak, we cannot fight with them. If we cannot, it's exactly what's happened in Seattle and Bellevue right now. So, Amazon want to bring 25,000 people. That's a BS, but it's not a point. Point, we need to stop in there, because I give you classic example, what is civilized people doing? New York, 12 million people a couple years ago refused Amazon. Amazon for 12 million people, like New York, it's looked like a small bedbug, you know what it means? Who cares about this? Yeah, 25,000 people for 30, for 12 million, it's nothing. But they thinking, like civilized people, you don't do nothing for the last 30 years. In 96, with Microsoft come and try destroy us with $50,000 factory, and I told many times, 20 miles away, it's empty place, go build everything, you know what it means? Good for people, good for economy, good for everybody, but you don't do in this. For 30 years, you never stop in Microsoft, you will never stop in Amazon. Why? Because by definition, you know what it means? You're not a people what is supposed to be citizens' chamber. You make us life miserable. Price for apartment right now jumped like a crazy. Look right now for another apartment for moving. So, for two months, price jumped by 300 bucks, more than 10 percentage. So, every year, 10 percentage, is it? Seattle have right now a rush price, $3,000. 50 percentage in Seattle, around state, Washington, make less than $50,000. How you can afford this mafia what has come from Amazon, huh? How you can? Why you so quiet? I don't understand. Are you a psychopath, a mentally sick, or you a crook by definition? Or you boring, like a natural boring degenerate idiot? Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Hal Ferris.
Hello. My name is Hal Ferris. I'm representing Imagine Housing and the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition tonight. I want to thank all of you for the work you do for our city and the patience they show our community as a whole. We very much appreciate what you're doing. I'm here to support the priorities identified in the staff report for the next right work. However, given the urgency of our housing crisis and the office development underway, we must do more now. You heard those items specifically that Ryan Donahue represented, who also is a member of the coalition. Our coalition has recommended additional tools that we feel can make a significant impact on our community in the short term to increase the production and preservation of affordable housing. Amongst these many tools, land use alone will not be enough to provide housing affordable to families earning less than 60% of their median income. Additional funding is needed to support the cost of development and operations. Commercial linkage fees are a critical part of the funding strategy and is included in the top priorities recommended by staff. Commercial linkage fees apply to all commercial development, including office, hotels, multifamily, and retail. In return for an increase in development capacity, the owner developer can, one, provide affordable housing on-site. They can provide affordable housing off-site. They can provide deed in lieu of -- provide land in lieu of the development on which affordable housing can be developed. Or they can pay a fee. All of these options can be calibrated to encourage development. 482 jurisdictions across the country, including Redmond, Kirkland, Issaquah, King County, and Seattle, have such a structure. This is not a new endeavor. This is something we can do. With council support, the staff will research and evaluate how the commercial fees, linkage fees, can best be shaped to be applied in Bellevue. And the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition offers our help in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Then is our third and final speaker, speaking in support of item 10B, the next right work item. The next speaker on our list is Jessica Clausen.
Hello, Council. Jessica Clausen, I'm the co-chair of the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce's Plush Committee. We sent a letter to you earlier today outlining some thoughts and concerns that we do have with the next right work proposal. First, I do want to say that the outreach that was conducted for this report was really great. The consultant, AP Heard, did a fabulous job of going, I think you heard by -- from Ryan Donahue, going around and really drilling down with people, asking them what strategies we can bring forward to help affordability in Bellevue. And so, bravo to her and bravo to the staff for that outreach effort. It was phenomenal. The report was also one of the best I've read in terms of really drilling down on a lot of the actual details of these proposals. That being said, the Plush Committee remains very strongly opposed to a commercial linkage fee. A commercial linkage fee without trade in density is illegal under state law and federal law, actually. And so, we would encourage Bellevue to look at legal options if it chooses to charge fees or require affordable housing in exchange for additional density. Bellevue is not Seattle, obviously. Bellevue is not Redmond. It cannot be compared -- Bellevue cannot be compared to other cities who may have adopted these types of fees, and we would encourage the City Council not to do things just because other jurisdictions have done so, but to do things in a Bellevue way, which is to say, calibrate fees in a way that actually do the thing that I think you're trying to do, which is support affordable housing and increase behaviors by developers and others that you're looking to get. We don't want you to lose momentum also. I think this report, as I said, is a really, really good one. We are concerned that, as Ryan said, only 25% of the 16 recommendations are stated to move forward by staff. You have a major comprehensive plan update undergoing right now. There is a really good opportunity to look at these things while staff is actually changing the comprehensive plan. I would encourage all 16 things to be strongly looked at in the comprehensive plan, and include in that the ability to do contract rezones in growth centers. That's a very big tool that we lack today under the current comprehensive plan that we think could really help individual developers bring more affordability to the city. So, again, thank you to everybody for this report.
Thank you, Ms. Clausen. That is the end of our pre-registered list. As I said earlier, we have reached three folks in support of the item 10B, next right work. If there is anyone else who has a comment on a different item that is joining us here in council chambers or online, please raise your hand, and to do so online, it's star nine. Okay, Ms. Dean.
Hi, good evening, Council. I actually hadn't planned to say anything at all during oral communications tonight until I just got here and realized what I was listening to. I do find it interesting to listen to folks representing the developers, whether they be with Imagine Housing or attorneys representing developers, saying, you know, that it's illegal to ask the developers to put their housing in, the affordable housing in, you can't do that. But I do know that the Plush Committee is quite often really pushing to put that density into the neighborhoods. I do know somebody that's on the Plush Committee that's had to fight them off for that. So, that is my concern, is that our development community in Bellevue doesn't want to have to take part in that, but they keep pushing that towards the neighborhoods, that we are supposed to bear the burden of their growth, their success. And sitting there, listening to this, really made me upset and angry, because I hear all the time about the need for affordable housing, but our development community doesn't want to take part in that. They don't want to lose their profits, but our neighborhoods will bear the burden for it. So, please, as you go forward, bear that in mind. Neighborhoods are not supposed to be growth centers. Now, I know they're probably talking about neighborhood shopping centers and that sort of thing, but again, there's right size for everything, and I'm really concerned about that, and I know you know that, Ms. Clausen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Mayor, I did not see any additional hands that would close oral communications.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
A motion to approve the consent calendar? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a public hearing tonight. I'm going to clarify that this is just a vote that we're going to be discussing to extend the current IOC. It's not about the merits or lack of merits of the IOC, it's just about extending it. So, I will ask Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce something?
Well, that was a good introduction, Mayor, and I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Liz Stad, as well as Caleb Miller, to give a brief staff report in preparation for the public hearing this evening.
Thank you, City Mayor, Jeremiaki. Good morning. Oh, good evening. It's been a long day. Sorry. I'm still at 8 o'clock this morning. Yeah, a little worse for wear, but still at 8 o'clock. So, good evening, and thank you for having us this evening. I'm joined tonight by Caleb Miller, also from the Development Services Department, and he is going to be presenting a short PowerPoint to introduce the supportive housing and emergency housing, shelter, interim official control, or IOC, extension topic. As you recall, the IOC has been effective for just under one year, so it is time to extend it again, and the council is currently reviewing proposed amendments for permanent regulations related to this project. Any IOC extension that the council considers this evening will not affect the permanent regulations, but it will instead provide more time for more thorough consideration by council for those proposed code amendments. So, Caleb, do you want to take it away?
Sure, thank you, Liz. So, the action staff are requesting tonight is for council to hold the public hearing on ordinance number 6668, which is the IOC extension ordinance, and then, following the public hearing, adopt ordinance 6668. For our presentation tonight, we'll give you an overview of the history and objective of the IOC, followed by the specific components included in the IOC ordinance, and then an overview of the LUCA process up to this point, and IOC process, I should say. So, for a quick history, this work is necessary to conform the land use code with state laws amended under House Bill 1220 in 2021. This state law requires cities to allow permanent supportive housing and transitional housing in all districts where residential uses and hotels and motels are allowed, and then emergency housing and emergency shelter in all districts where hotels and motels are allowed. And I'll go through each of these uses in the next slide. In response to this, interim official control was originally adopted by council about a year ago in July of 2021, and then it was subsequently extended again in December under ordinance 6637. Right now, it is set to expire on July 12, unless it is extended tonight. And then, should it be extended tonight, it will be replaced by the permanent LUCA upon So, for a quick overview of the housing types addressed in the House Bill 1220, the two on the left are permanent supportive and transitional housing. These are meant to be long-term or permanent residency for their occupants, and these can be paired with comprehensive, individualized supportive services. And all these are meant to just be long-term residential operations. The two on the right, emergency housing and emergency shelter, are meant to be shorter-term interventions with those with more of an acute need for housing, and the services that may be provided are more generalized and address more basic daily needs of the residents. Moving on, the interim official control we're discussing tonight has two different components, the first being the land use tables, where new footnotes for permanent supportive housing and transitional housing were inserted to say they are allowed wherever residences and hotels and motels are allowed. And then homeless services uses were also updated to be allowed wherever hotels and motels are allowed. I'll note that homeless services uses are still subject to conditional use permit approval under the IOC. The other component of this would be just updating the definitions under homeless services uses to include emergency housing and emergency shelter. Next is just an overview of the timeline for this IOC and LUCA process. As I noted, this IOC was adopted in July of 2021 and extended in December of 2021. As I noted, this IOC was adopted in July of 2021 and extended in December of 2021. And then, should it be extended tonight following the public hearing, it will be replaced by the IOC following its adopt, or sorry, it will be replaced by the LUCA following its adoption. And so with that, again, staff are seeking council to hold a public hearing on this ordinance, and then following the hearing, adopting the interim official control. And I'll pass it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Is there anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are actually two registered speakers this evening. And before I call names, I'll let the public know that there is no set time limit for public hearings, and each speaker is allowed to speak up to three minutes. And for the council's information, there was one written comment received for the public hearing tonight, and that is included in your desk packet. So with that, I'll call our first speaker, which is Ms. Dean.
Regarding the LUCA that you're talking about, I know there was concern. Councilmember Stokes, you said you didn't want the legislature to come back and say, can't you read because of any amendments or changes that were made to the proposed LUCA. But the fact of the matter is, they can't come back and say that because they've already taken such incredible liberties with our local planning authority. And as a matter of fact, in March 2021, the mayors of the Sound Cities Association sent a letter to the legislature regarding HB 1220 and the infringement upon local planning authority. And Mayor, you were one of the mayors that signed that, as did most of them in this area, except for Penny Sweet in Kirkland. And then the next month after that, Patty Cooterer, our Senator for the 48th Legislative District, made an amendment that actually made the overreach on local planning authority even worse. So, no, they can't come back and say that. They left us wiggle room in there, room to make mitigations and amendments, and I do think the things that have been proposed were very responsible and reasonable. As I've sat here through these meetings, I've heard a number of things that have happened. We know that there are subsets of the homeless, many subsets actually, and that some are more appropriate than others to be living, you know, in the neighborhoods. And I heard a lot of conflation. I heard conflation this last meeting with Arch units and Section 8 housing. You can't compare them with an Alexander J, the fellow that threw the women, the woman down the stairs at the light rail station and then stabbed a lady later. He actually came up into Newport Hills and terrorized people in my neighborhood prior to that. And that's why he was in jail before. So there was a lot of kind of dramatization about the question of density and kind of clustering. There was the comparison of the LGBTQ service providers and vets being in the same cul-de-sac. And I just feel like we need to acknowledge that there's a lot of talk on this council about equity, 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 equity. And if you're not going to stand by that, if you're not going to put mitigations in to disperse this permanent supportive housing and transient housing in the different areas, please don't ever talk about equity again. You have to put your money where your mouth is, walk the talk. Please don't dramatize, don't conflate, just do it. They gave you the tools, do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I previously said we had two pre-registered speakers, but I have received an email from that second speaker that they incorrectly registered. So at this point, that is the end of our list. If there is anyone here in council chambers who would like to make comment during this public hearing or joining us online, please use the raise hand function, which is star nine if you're connected with a phone, or raise your hand here in chambers. Okay, I see no additional hands, Mayor.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so there is a motion. I'm going to ask the deputy mayor to make a motion.
Certainly, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 6668, extending an interim official control adopted by ordinance number 6585 and extended by ordinance number 6637.
Okay, and I'm going to clarify again that this vote is about just extending the current IOC. It's not about the permanent land use code amendment that we are going to be discussing later this month. So, any comments or questions on extending the temporary IOC? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So we are on to our study session items. We have two topics tonight. I'm going to ask Mr. Miyake to introduce them.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The first topic is the city's housing stability program, also known as the city's 1590 program. And tonight, the staff are seeking direction to bring back legislation at a future council meeting to implement the housing stability program based on a policy framework, which will be presented to you this evening. So joining us this evening is our Emile King, Assistant Director from the Community Development Department, Tony Esparsa, Assistant Director from the Parks and Human Services Department, and joining us remotely is Lindsay Masters, our Arch Executive Director. Is Lindsay on, Charlie?
Thank you, City Manager. Yes, she is on. You will only be able to see her face when she speaks.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Emile King.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyake, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Staff from Community Development, Parks and Community Services, and Arch are very excited to be here tonight to discuss the housing stability program, what we previously called the 1590 program. This is the 0.1% sales and use tax that Bellevue chose to collect locally starting in 2021 to serve our local needs here in the community. Cities that did not choose to have a local collection have their monies pooled with King County. We use the term "one city" for this type of effort. It's a true cross-departmental effort. You're going to hear tonight about how we as a city are going to deliver housing and needed services to Bellevue's most vulnerable residents, and we look to do this in a thoughtful, effective, and efficient manner.
It's every week.
Staff are seeking some direction tonight from council. We'll be reviewing the proposed approach for implementing the housing stability program, and with council concurrents on our recommendation, we'll move forward with year two of implementation. This is going to also include the ongoing staff resources to be authorized at an upcoming meeting, and that is going to come out of the tax collection, so there's no competition with existing resources in the city. The agenda for tonight is going to include how the housing stability program relates to the 2017 affordable housing strategy, a recap of implementation during the first year in 2021, including a review of lessons learned, our recommended framework for the ongoing program, and finally, next steps. The housing stability program does further a number of key areas of the city's 2017 affordable housing strategy. That strategy contemplated how additional resources could be used in meeting the city's needs, especially for the lower income and vulnerable populations. The affordable housing strategy also talks about a continuum of actions for affordable housing, and this program is really going to be able to address the affordable housing through preventing residents from falling into homelessness to providing an array of targeted housing options based on individual needs of these specific populations. And finally, the affordable housing money will meet needs, especially at the 0% to 30% AMI level, as well as the 30% to 60% AMI level as well. Want to take a moment to recap the year one of implementation. In October 2020, City Council established the desire to have this local program through the new state enabling in RCW 8214530. 2021 was the first full year of implementation with the tax collection starting in January of 2021. The year 2021 did have 9.7 million collected through this local sales and use tax, and the 2022 forecast is for approximately 10.3 million to be collected. Council approved a HB 1590 local interest statement in February of 2021, and that is included in your council library for reference. The first of two 2021 RFPs were issued, starting in May 2021, with 1.66 million ultimately awarded in August for behavioral health and housing-related services. As a follow-up, in August 2021, we did a second RFP for capital expenditures, and that ultimately resulted in 1.6 million for the Life Wire's "Hope Starts Here" project in Bellevue. Year one was successful in that we deployed needed resources in our community, but it also served as a really good learning experience to set up our future program. First off, we learned that with this resource, we're really going to need to balance the unit production and operation and maintenance of those buildings with the general behavioral health and housing-related services. It might seem like a lot of money to have approximately $10 million, but once you start arraying it out to the needs in the community, we need to be thoughtful about how we're deploying it. The funding for the ONM and onsite services is essential for the housing stability program projects, and this was identified by council as a best practice a number of times when you were discussing supportive housing, for example. To get the most out of this funding, we're really going to need to continue the coordination and have flexibility to leverage other resources. The more we can partner with others, the farther the money's going to go. Next, the capital funding in year one will ramp up as projects have more time to incorporate this funding source and momentum is built for our capital projects. Continuing with a couple more lessons learned, there are opportunities for partnerships such as preservation of units and securing land, and we hope to explore these further in the future. And based on the staff and council interest in upfront bonding, we will need to take some time to firm up those funding opportunities and projects before we rush out and bond against this revenue source. And lastly, it's very important to recognize this revenue source as a way to prevent people from falling into homelessness. So that was a key part of our direction in forming this recommendation to council. I want to give just a brief review of the state-enabling law that's included in the RCW Revised Code of Washington. It states that at least 60% of this money does need to go towards facilities and programs for specific populations, as listed in your council memo. And this can include both the construction or acquisition of properties and can also include land for those types of uses. We're also able to include the ongoing operation and maintenance of those housing projects or facilities, including the housing-related programs that might be within those facilities. The lower part of this slide shows that no more than 40% of the money can be spent on the supplementary standalone behavioral health programs and housing-related services not associated with a particular building. Our proposal tonight is well within the state-enabling law. Now we're going to shift into the proposed framework that is coming to council from staff. I'll lead things off and then hand it off to Lindsay and Tony. As an orientation, this is our stack of how the monies are proposed to be used. You'll see that we have percentages that do add up to the 100% of annual revenues, and as I said, this is about 10.3 million expected in 2022. You'll see that this does have a balance between unit production and things like behavioral health and human services. So as we walk through this, Lindsay and Tony will be going into a bit more detail on these. So with that, I'm going to hand things over to Lindsay Masters, the Executive Director out at Arch.
Thanks, Emile. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thanks for allowing me to participate virtually. I am truly excited to be here as a part of this amazing team and to be able to help the city initiate a program that's going to truly be making significant ongoing investments in housing stability for vulnerable residents in the community, and while doing so, adding to our long-term permanent supply of affordable housing. We've got a lot of work to do in front of us, and we're excited to get going with that. I just want to acknowledge all the work that's gone into getting us here and all the deeply affordable housing that's going to be created with the initiation of this program. The first area of the program that I want to talk about is on the slide you have in front of you, and this investment area creates a pathway for the city to be able to deploy up to 40% of the revenue towards timely capital opportunities and partnerships. This would allow the city to front-load some of the resources and make larger investments than would typically be possible in a given year, again, by taking advantage of that authority to bond against future revenues. The overarching priorities for these investments would be consistent with those that were established for capital investments per the council direction in 2021, when we initiated the first RFP. And those priorities include serving residents with lower incomes between 0% and 30% of the median income, as well as addressing homelessness and housing instability, and targeting vulnerable underserved populations, many of which are listed in the state statute. Potential investments that we've discussed and are eager to work on include acquisition of existing housing already in the community to preserve that affordability for the communities that are here and at risk of displacement, and potentially buying down rents to even more affordable levels. In addition, we'd be interested in seeking opportunities to make significant land acquisitions that would enable future affordable housing development. This is a recognition of the fact that land prices in Bellevue are probably the number one barrier to developing affordable housing in the city, and we've got to take the time to try and secure some of those opportunities for the long-term future of the city. We're excited that there's some past successes that the city could build from in this arena, particularly including partnerships with the King County Housing Authority around preservation and leveraging federal resources that the housing authority has the unique opportunity to bring into the city. As compared with the second area that I'll talk about in a moment, that first area, I just want to mention, it allows the city also to be able to advance these types of investments throughout the year, not just on a once-a-year basis. The second area we'll talk about is kind of a follow-on to the RFP we initiated last year, and this area of investment would direct 40% of the annual revenue toward a regular, consistent funding round for the development of new projects. An important addition to this, the RFP this year and in future years, would be the ability to invite proposals for ongoing funding that would support the operations, maintenance, and onsite supportive services that are so critical in the types of projects we want to invest in. This RFP would be coordinated with the annual Arch Trust Fund Round, which is itself built on many years of coordination with other local and statewide funding programs for affordable housing. This alignment is really critical in helping us to continue leveraging city funds for even greater local impact. This would include potentially funds from other Arch cities, as well as state and regional resources that typically would provide as much as 75% or more of the total project financing. So that's really critical to making sure the city's resources can go further. This area of the program was really tailored to a lot of the stakeholder feedback that city investment in those ongoing operations and services is really essential to making sure projects are going to be successful in supporting ongoing housing stability for residents with significant needs. The city is recommending initially that investments can be made up to $12,500 per unit per year, with funds to be provided through five-year renewable grants. This structure is designed to recognize that we're making long-term investments in these developments and in the community, and kind of consistent with the long-term requirements that we would be imposing through our capital investments. Similar to the first area, the priorities for these capital funds are consistent with the overall priorities the council established in 2021. the overall priorities the council established in twenty twenty one.
Good evening, council members. This next part of the framework would deploy approximately fifteen percent of the revenues to behavioral health and housing-related services that are not affiliated with capital-funded projects through this revenue source. So this is similar to what the council approved in twenty twenty one, when we issued an RFP as early wins, funding behavioral health services at some of our shelters, case management and supportive services at some of our housing providers, and also standing up behavioral health services for some of our residents who are underserved in our community. So the recommendation moving forward includes allocating fifteen percent of the revenue that would go out in an RFP once every two years, similar to the Human Services Fund. Those recommendations would be formed for funding by the Human Services Commission, relying on an established process that already works very well, and then those recommendations would come to the council for approval and would go out in two-year contracts.
The last five percent of the annual revenues would go towards staff support. So we looked at other models out there and how much they allocated for administration and oversight and came up with a five percent number. This would be used to fund a truly one-city team involving staff from community development, the human services staff, and parks and community services, and then our support that we receive from Arch as well. And this would be backed by revenues collected through the tax, so it's, again, not in competition with any other staffing that we're doing at the city. So I'll just touch on next steps before I hand it back to the mayor. Our immediate next steps would be a request for proposals for affordable and supportive housing capital and ONM, and this would be with the rollover money from year one, it would be ten point five million available this go-round. As Tony just described, we'd have an RFP for behavioral health and housing-related services of approximately one point five five million. And we would, to set up future bonding discussions, continue with our due diligence on preservation and land acquisition opportunities. In addition, with council direction, we would recruit and onboard staff to help run the Housing Stability Program, and we'd report back to council with our regular affordable housing updates and clearly monitor and recommend any adjustments as needed moving forward. So with that, I'd like to hand things back to the mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you for that presentation. Well, I'm going to start things off with the deputy mayor, since Cesar Lee is on to the Human Services Commission, and after that, we'll do council member Stokes.
Great.
And then council member Robertson is on, Lee and Barkstow.
Sounds good. Thank you, mayor. First of all, great presentation, really precise and really appreciate the timeliness and the speed in which we continue to move forward on this. I think the first year, we made some great progress, and we continue to do that. As we've all said, and as the community has told us, this is of utmost concern for our community, so I really appreciate keeping this moving forward and doing so very quickly. A couple of quick questions. So, and as the mayor alluded to, being the liaison to the Human Services Commission, we hear time and time again the behavioral health services being such an important piece. And one of the cornerstones of this is preventing people from falling into homelessness. So I guess my question is, how did we come up with fifteen percent for this particular area, knowing that such a large percentage of those experiencing homelessness are suffering from mental health issues, are suffering from drug or substance abuse? Should we need, or do we need to put a higher priority on that balanced with the housing piece on here? But would love for you to speak to that just for a moment before I continue.
Yeah. One of our big lessons learned from the first year was the need for housing production or preservation and the need for the human service needs of the community. So that was first and foremost, as we thought about the kind of breakdown of the different buckets of money. We did look at fifteen and twenty percent for that, what I'm calling the standalone behavioral health and human services RFP. So we did look at two toggles on it. We did land on the fifteen percent, but we did look at two options. It is important to note that the middle tier there, that's the capital projects along with onsite services, is going to include a significant amount of onsite services within buildings. So that is service dollars that are coupled with that capital project, forty percent. So the fifteen percent is not the only amount of money that's being used for what I'm going to call the human interface and interaction with people who are in need. There is going to be a growing amount coming out of that middle bucket, as Lindsay described, where we're looking at funding up to twelve thousand five hundred per unit per year if people can make the case for needed onsite services for their buildings, and that does add up to a significant amount of money as you kind of go out over time.
Got you. Okay, thank you. And then could you also speak for a moment about the targets here? So on the bonding for affordable housing partnerships and projects, we've got a minimum of one hundred and seventy units. And then for the next one, we've got one hundred and thirty to one hundred and seventy, and that's under the capital projects that you just mentioned there. Can you just give me just a brief, you know, how you came to those numbers? Are they really based on what we're seeing right now in terms of in the community for a needs assessment, or is that based more on the number of units that we think we can create over that period of time?
It's based on the second. It's what we think we can actually create with that, with this revenue source. And once you have the human service needs, whether it's in the building or the separate RFP, we wanted to have a, you know, it's a relatively conservative estimate. We'd have it to overpromise what we would deliver on this monies. That's why it says minimum amount.
Right.
The things that relate to the actual unit delivery is going to be the leverage that we can get with others helping to invest in these properties, whether it be through the Arch Housing Trust Fund or the private sector helping out with these. So we view those as minimums. They are on par with the King County program. That program is, as you might expect, quite a bit bigger than our city alone, and that was about sixteen hundred.
Right.
Unit. So, you know, my math shows a minimum of three hundred to three hundred forty units just in Bellevue over a twenty-year period. So we made some assumptions about leverage rate minimum we would get, and the construction costs are high. That's the other factor that goes into it. But great, great question about how we came up with those.
Great, thank you. And yes, generally supportive of this. Again, great work and continue to move this forward as quickly as we possibly can, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes, followed by council member Robertson.
Yeah, this is very exciting, we're getting to this point. I'm just thinking about, it's been five years since we put together the Affordable Housing Strategy, and we've made a lot of progress in that. And, you know, I like to say, you know, the world's turned. We're not in twenty seventeen anymore, and it's, the need is even greater, things are going faster. We also have a lot more support than we had at that time, so I think a lot of stuff has come along. I, you know, and I think deputy mayor's questions are good, and we know we're going into the, you know, how much money and all these things that we're in there, and I think it's kind of assuring to have the answers. And I do believe and trust that, and from everything I see, that the staff has done a tremendous job and with other people helping to get to these recommended actions. It's one of these moments where I think a lot of would really, I know there are people in the audience who would like to do all of these, all sixteen.
Councilmember Stokes? I'm just going to clarify that we're talking about the fifteen ninety money, the Houseville fifteen ninety in the Housing Stability Program and not the Affordable Housing First Best Steps, Best Work.
Okay.
Really good comments, and will be perfect for the next topic.
Okay.
Do you have any comments on the recommendations on the?
I think it's good.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
I just got some excitement.
I know. I'm with you. Okay, council member Robertson.
All right, thanks. Going on to the slide that has the buckets there, I'm just going to start at the bottom. First of all, you know, I'm so glad that we opted into the fifteen ninety, where we can really take this and do some good with it. And I was also pleasantly surprised to see that the estimated annual revenue from this program is actually growing. Do we expect the growing to continue? I mean, I know that sales tax is very economic-dependent. You don't know? Okay.
I think if you look back over history, it does grow, but it's a weird world right now, so I guess let's take it year by year and see how it goes.
Perfect. Well, ten million a year, I was thinking twenty years, that's two hundred million dollars, and we can do a lot of good on that. So first, I do support using the five percent for the cost of the program. I think that's really appropriate. And I also support having the carve-out for behavioral health that is off-site behavioral health, and I am glad that we have the onsite behavioral health baked into the forty percent bucket. I think that onsite services is a best practice, and if we're going to have supportive housing projects, affordable housing projects that need services to keep people housed, to help people stabilize, having them onsite is really great, and that's something I want, I definitely want to support. And I appreciate that we're doing a one-city team. The thing I have a little heartburn about, a couple of things. One, we know that building housing is less expensive when the private sector does it than when the public sector or nonprofits do it. So when I was doing a little math, and at eighty percent of the two hundred million, a hundred and sixty million dollars over twenty years, to build, say, best-case scenario, three hundred and forty units, because you said a hundred and seventy and a hundred and seventy, that's four hundred and seventy thousand five hundred eighty-eight dollars per unit that it would cost if we do it fully public sector. So I absolutely support the program and doing the RFP. I understand about the need for an annual RFP, because there's other sources that come on that annual cycle. But I look at, as we are, in the next agenda item, we're going to talk about the next right work on helping the private sector as well grow affordable housing. And I see every project where there's multiple dwelling units being constructed as an opportunity. And it's an opportunity to potentially invest some of this money to buy down affordability. If we have a private developer that's using MFTVE, that's using the Affordable Housing Bonus, I think that's an opportunity for us to then also enter into a contract to give some of this money to that private developer to buy down permanent affordability, to have the, instead of eighty percent AMI, sixty percent or fifty percent AMI. And that could be something that would be really good for the public, because, one, you're getting the disperse dispersion of the units throughout the city and throughout different projects, but also it'd be a lot less than the four hundred and seventy thousand dollars plus per unit that we will pay if we do it on the nonprofit government-generated only. So I would really like to see, and we talked about this when I had my briefing on this, to the extent we don't appropriate all the money every cycle, I'd like to see that fund be able to be used in a nimble manner if we have private developers building housing, to be able to partner with them, to help them make the Affordable Housing pencil by maybe putting some direct, you know, money under a contract to those projects. I think that would be really good. On the bonding, I'm absolutely open to bonding projects as needed. I don't suspect that right now is the best time to bond because of the high inflation and the high interest rates, so it might be something that we do later, but I don't want that money to lie fallow. In the meantime, I'd like to make sure that we put that money to work in order to help develop more housing and more affordable housing across the city of Bellevue. So, thank you.
Thank you. One second, you said something that made me want to write something down.
Oh, I love when that happens.
Hold on for a sec.
I guess I'll ask a question while you do that, mayor. So would we, as we discussed, the potential to have the unappropriated funding be nimble if something comes up, or we can invest that to create more affordable housing units? Is that something that, as the project and the scope and the different buckets of money is presented tonight, that we would be able to do, or do you need additional direction from council in order to do that? Because while everyone wants to see this money put to work, I think we'd like to make sure we can get the most for our money at any given time. So can you address that, please, Emile?
The top bucket, that was the preservation and land acquisition, as Lindsay described, that would be an open process, and it wouldn't have an RFP. So that's the nature of that top bucket that we described. The middle one with the capital RFP, we did envision that as an annual RFP with the unused funds rolled over into the next year's RFP. If there was council direction to reserve any unused monies to use between the RFP processes, that we would, I guess, politely ask for council direction to do that, because that wasn't something that we were necessarily contemplating. After our briefing, we did think about how to reach out to the private sector developers to get them more knowledgeable about this RFP process, so that they could participate in the annual process and be engaged in that way. So that might be a happy medium about seeking out that leverage opportunity without having an open process for that middle bucket throughout the year, but clearly seeking some council direction on that.
Okay, well, then I'll just say, and I don't know what the rest of the council thinks, I would support allowing people to apply in between, particularly if they don't need to be on the stacked capital-public-sector side. I think that it would be a good way to continue to build units all year long.
Okay, council members on, followed by council member Lee.
Yeah, thank you. I'm so glad that this is in front of us. I echo comments that my colleagues have already made, specifically about the upfront bonding, and really the word that you used was strategic. So how do we make sure we're leveraging opportunities, we're strategic, creating as much flexibility as possible? So I support the, instead of making it a annual only on this date, that we should be poised for, if an opportunity shows up and it fits these criteria and there's money, that we look at how we might support that. You know, when I thought about last year, we had twenty-five applications for three point three million dollars, and we only had one point six six. This year, we have slightly less. You know, my sense is that if there's an opportunity to support behavioral health services, then we really need to look at, on that middle bucket, that forty percent, you know, if there's funding available and there's potential behavioral health services being requested, that we really need to look at how we might support that. The one that you talked about on the proposed framework on the staff support of the five percent, I'm also thinking about the fact that our community-based organizations oftentimes don't have the capacity. In fact, last week, the Eastside Human Services Forum had a discussion about pay equity and uncompensated labor, so I think that there is potentially needs from the community human services side of also staff support. So one of my questions would be, could some of the funding be used for that? Could some of the funding be used, or do we foresee it would be used for permanent supportive housing, which, you know, we know that we have the IOC right now, but that's also going to be coming back? Can some of the funding be used for the other thing that's going to be coming back, which is our safe parking program considerations and some of those services? So some of my questions are around, what kind of flexibility do we have within the law to leverage those funds? And, you know, really then, as I think about this program that gives us a lot of flexibility, how do we make sure that we shape it in a way that is a win-win for both the city and the providers and the clients we're trying to serve? So what I mean by that is, we might think about how those RFPs can be streamlined, the most efficient and effective. Can it be for a multi-year instead of every single year they have to apply? You know, can we? So anyway, some kind of policy questions related to how we might frame those services. And then, lastly, how might this play into potential grant funding that might be available for nine eight eight services, which would then be, right, someone calls into nine eight eight, we triage and recognize that there's behavioral health services needed? Is there grant funding for that, and would it play into what we're trying to do here? So, excited about it, but do have some questions. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, why don't I start off, and then Tony can help out as well? As far as monies towards... As far as monies towards permanent supportive housing, as an example, that would typically come out of that middle tranche of money. So that is, I think, geared for capital investment with the required essential onsite services and O&amp;M. So that's where the supportive housing, and that's where that connection can be made. We talked a bit about the safe parking idea, and that would most likely make sense to apply for the behavioral health and housing-related services if they thought that was a good fit for that RFP. So there is an avenue for things like that to apply. As far as the, I heard a bit about the desire for some flexibility with RFP. So it sounds like that's similar to Councilmember Robertson's idea of, if there's unused money, don't sit on it, but deploy it. So that was the nugget of insight there. We did talk a bit about shifting monies to the 15% behavioral health and housing-related services, and there's some pros and cons to it. I mean, as you noted, there's a huge need for that that do exceed the, you know, roughly 1.55 million. There are some things to be thinking about if that amount kind of yo-yos from year to year, up and down. And Tony can elaborate on some of the expectation management. If you have a high number, one cycle, and then all of a sudden it's back down to a lower number and what that does for some of the providers. And if you wanted to respond to that, Tony, and as well as the grant funding question there.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for your questions, Councilmembers Zahn. So a few of the topics that I heard you talk about, one was related to the ongoing effort for human services providers to achieve pay equity for their frontline service providers. And 1590 or the Housing Stability Program will, just by existence, help with that in some way. And what I mean by that is, we already ask our providers, when they apply, to please apply for what you actually need. Please don't temper your expectations to how much you think we have available. Because of that, our providers do tell us the need. And so, for example, for the Human Services Fund for this year, we've received requests in excess of $10 million, and we have $5.5 million available. So of course, that leaves the Human Services Commission with difficult questions in order to bring you a recommendation. And so options are challenging and tend to range between trying to spread the money across everybody, which may not always help achieve pay increases, or funding a few and leaving others unfunded. So the council, by adopting this revenue source, has infused dollars in critical areas that will allow that slice to not be so thin. And it will allow agencies to receive funding closer to what they request or for us to more fully fund agencies. So there's no quick solution to get us there, but just the very existence of this revenue does help move us forward. As far as 988, I have heard that there will be some grant funding that may come with that from other sources, but I do not have concrete answers for you on that. As we get more information, I can definitely share that with you. But I do know that that too could lead to an infusion in the community for hopefully some additional behavioral health services. And then to your point of the timing of RFP, so they'll run a little different. The services that will be attached with the capital projects will get funded for five years and then be eligible for renewal. We've recommended at this point, on the services side, that it be once every two years, so not every year, at least in the beginning, to allow us to coincide with the same timing for our other human services contracts, to your point of trying to make this a little easier for our providers. There's the potential that down the road, we would need to explore with legal only issuing one RFP, and then on the backside, doing the work to evaluate which would be the best funded through the Housing Stability Program funds or which through the Human Services Fund, again with the eye on what you've suggested of how do we make this easier for providers and not complicate a process and just let them do their good work in the community?
Yeah, easier and predictable funding.
Yes.
You know, lastly, you know, we heard last week that the very people that work for these providers are actually the clients.
Unfortunately, correct. Yes. Yeah. And so the last one that Mr. King brought up in response to one of your questions, there are pros and cons to adding extra dollars to human services funding as it becomes available and then knowing it won't be available the next time. And while in the midst of the pandemic, the council made some great allocations that responded to a critical and urgent, hopefully temporary, need. For the long term, it would be hard to balance one-time funding against the fact that that could lead to layoffs for staff and starting a program and then shutting it back down because the funding wasn't available.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you.
Followed by Councilmember Barksdale.
I'm really glad to say that we took advantage of the, you know, state bill to give us money, that we choose to keep it, that we can have our team, an excellent team, to implement this work. Because I think we have a great planning department, as we know. They can plan so well, and they do a good job always. But of course, it's only, you know, intentions and estimates. And what is really needs is this team that can implement it. And I believe we have a great team in place. We have Arch. I've always said that Arch is a great, successful, proven success in the past with a regional approach to really address the housing situation and human situation. You know, human situations are addressed by our Human Services Department. So all these things, we have been doing it for 30 years. So I believe that we, if anybody who can understand, who knows how to do this, our staff, you guys, can do it. So I'm very happy, very, very confident that, you know, we're in very good hands. As a result, I think that, you know, this housing issue obviously is most important to, you know, a lot of people, everybody almost, including Bellevue. So I think this is a very, what I call, a great start, and I support it unquestionably. But I just wanted to make a few comments that we want to have, like, you know, Councilmember Robertson mentioned, we need to have some flexibility, because needs change. You know, right now, we say we're on 40% here, went 15%, there went 5% there. We don't know. Needs change, right? Opportunity comes, and we want to bond, no question about it. But how to bond, when to bond, what to bond, that's up to you guys, right? The staff will know, over the years, you know how to manage it. Again, we are proven success. You come to us, we talk about it, we say, hey, this is the right thing to do, that's the right thing to do. So I believe that it needs to be flexible, nimble. And, you know, we're always there to listen to you, to support you. And I believe that when you talk about whether the projects can be done, like Councilmember Robertson mentioned, privately or publicly. Bellevue has always depended on the private side doing things. Even our human services, we contract with nonprofits. They do it well. We plan it, we have a goal, we set our targets, and we work with them. And if we do a job right, we can actually increase our goals. We can be more efficient, effective. And otherwise, we can always adjust. I think that's important. So I believe that, you know, we can, even in our own process, when we do it, if we want to build, we use RFP as a process, right? When you do RFP, I would imagine you use certain criterias for contractors. And that we can learn from the private sector, right? Hopefully, that the program is so successful, the way we do it, the private sector says, gee, we want to do it too. In that case, we say, wow, great, you guys can do it. You know, so I think it's really very symbiotic, what we do. So I don't think we need to be locked down in one thing or the other. But it's, we are setting the example. Right now, we're leading it because the private sector is not doing it yet. We haven't figured out how to do it. We're gonna, we have to work through it. We're just beginning the process, beginning the project. So as we learn, we'll develop ways that we can have everybody working on it. So I believe that as long, you know, it's also a 20-year plan, right? This is all set up right now, you know? And so after five, 10, 20, 15 years, things can change. So I really like the way you're set up. I really believe in you guys. We believe in our teams. I just think we've got reasonable amount of money to work with. And if we do it well, the private sector will take over, and we don't even have to worry about money. So I really think it's a great project. I support it. And go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Councilmember Barksdale.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Thanks for the presentation, Tony and Emile. One of the things that I think this is, provides an opportunity for also, we've talked about community responder and crisis response. And we, as Councilmembers, I mentioned, we also received communication from the community about some of the work that they've been doing around understanding the models around crisis response. And so I was curious, and I raised it during my briefing, the implication of being able to provide some funding, similar to how we're doing for ongoing funding, similar to how we're doing for administrative staff for this program, for crisis responders, behavioral health specialists. Because I think the facilities are already, like any sort of crisis stabilization centers would be covered by this current framework. Any sort of grant funding for community-based organizations, which has come up that provide behavioral health services, is covered by this framework. But having staff behavioral health specialists who can work closely with other staff as part of crisis response is not currently accounted for. Is that correct?
That is correct. And we looked a bit at if there were, if there were proposals to do it as a, you know, a non-city employee doing it, there are avenues for that to be applied for. So I think that would be most likely in the 15% tranche right there. As far as having, kind of increasing the 5% number and having what I was hearing of dedicated crisis response staff as part of this program, I think our recommendation is to look into that a bit more. And we are in a budget drafting year right now, and council will be looking at the city budget upcoming and if that dovetails with any other ideas in the city for providing that service. And we would, our goal is to get this program up and running in year two and get the money flowing. And there, I think there always is the opportunity in a future year, as soon as next year, to look back and see if we do want to increase that administrative part if there truly is an unmet need in the community for it. So I think there's some options there. I think staff is not recommending that we change this framework right now, but look at the overall city budget and how, and if that service should be provided at a city staff level.
Okay, understood. So when would that maybe come back? And what effort would be required to be able to shift that in the framework at a later point?
I'll say one thing that we talked to the city manager about, having staff come back quarterly and report back and so that we can see what's happening, see what's not happening, and reassess at that time.
Okay. I'll just say, I think, you know, we talked about when the CCAP program came to council, you know, the need for funding, and I think this is a rare opportunity for us to have that ongoing funding. So I would like to have this come back at some point for us to discuss.
I will mirror that in my comments as well.
All right. Thank you.
All done? Okay. So I'd like a generous time here, please. Yes, I have good company. I'm just so excited about this. I love the name of it. You know, when we were at our retreat, we put on preventing homelessness is one of our council values, and this falls right into that. So really appreciate focusing on stabilizing people's lives and preventing homelessness and preventing crisis as much as we can. The deputy mayor has mentioned, and so have you, Tony, about the human service funding. And I know there's only so much funding that we have to be able to use for the services provided to individuals. Does it make sense to increase the human service fund? Or is that kind of doing this? Or I'm just not sure, you know, we provide more services with the 1590 money, and they go through the human service allocation. Are we dumping it right into the fund and going from there, or is it a separate way of dispersing?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. So for this year, for sure, it would be a separate RFP, because the Human Services Fund RFP was already issued, and the Human Services Commission is already under review and deliberation. So it would most definitely be a separate RFP. If we're coming back regularly and we continue to monitor, I think it's something we were going to evaluate for the next cycle to determine, again, balancing all interests, what accomplishes the goals of the council, what's best for providers to streamline and make it easier for them to apply, yet still making sure we accomplish the goals of the Housing Stability Fund. And so we would need to kind of balance those interests. The Housing Stability Program, these 15% do create new services. And so they created new services with the RFP in 2021. Those providers can now apply to maintain. But providers that are currently funded under the Human Services Fund aren't coming back to look for these funds. This is intended to stand up new services in our community, which is what is really exciting about it, because it legitimately will put new behavioral health, case management, supportive services for our most vulnerable populations out into the community.
Terrific. Thank you. Good answer. And I too have a real strong commitment to the CCAP program, which is currently on hold, I believe, for lack of funding. And I had asked our city manager if this might be a good way to get more funding for that, and you said?
It's one of the, one of the CCAP program, well, the CCAP program we're taking very seriously and looking at and for my proposed budget to you. So I think we're looking at alternative funding sources. This could be one of them, as you mentioned, Councilmember Barksdale, but more to come in the very near future.
Yeah, I'm very interested in getting funding back into that program. I think it's super important. I really appreciate the emphasis on housing preservation. There's so much value in that. You take housing that was going to be torn down and redeveloped, and you retain the housing, you keep all that out of the landfill. It gets fixed up, it goes well with the character of the neighborhood, and you keep the whole community that's in there while creating permanently affordable housing. So I really appreciate the emphasis on that. Councilmember Robertson said something interesting. I know in our next discussion, we're going to be talking about micro-units. And I'm, you know, there's so many people who are currently homeless who could afford, individuals could afford $300 a month units, and we just don't have those. But maybe we could buy micro-units down, and maybe that's something that we could think about. And, you know, I'm very curious in our next conversation about, can we incentivize developers to put micro-units in with regular size, a variety of size of housing, so we have all different types of housing in the same buildings? So, okay, I'm on six. Housing Connector, that is a startup that helps people find housing, affordable housing. And I think Diane Carlson was going to get back to the people who asked questions about that. So I'm really interested, you don't have to tell me right now, but maybe if you want to, it's up to you, what, which your thoughts are on that, if this could fund any of that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good question. And yes, we do want to follow up with them. I think there are a couple of opportunities with that organization. And they may also very well be eligible for the 15% category.
Yeah, I think that's a great, an asset. And then just reiterating the quarter, the desire for a quarterly report so that we can be nimble, as you requested, and kind of see what's working or if we need to shift at all. So that, those are my comments. So I think we're ready for a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to direct that. Implement Bellevue's Housing Stability Program consistent with the recommended framework and return with appropriate legislation to support implementation of the ongoing program. All is authorized under RCW 82.14.530.
All does the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Terrific. Okay, we're going to take a break until 7:45.
Thank you so much.
Our second study session item. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. As you mentioned, this is the second topic for your study, the second and last topic of your study session this evening. And that is what the next right work should be as part of the city's affordable housing strategy. And tonight, staff are seeking council direction on what the next priority affordable housing work should be over the next 12 to 18 months that would complement an existing significant body of affordable housing work already underway. And just by way of background, this work is consistent with your adopted council priorities, the 2017 Affordable Housing Strategy, as well as council feedback received earlier this year. This work and staff, the staff recommendation is also based on community feedback as well as our consultant's analysis. So joining us this evening are Emil King, Assistant Director in Community Development Department, Trisna Tanis, Consulting Attorney from the Development Services Department. And along with them is AP Hurt, our consultant from Skipstone. and along with them is AP Heard, our consultant from Skipstone. And available for questions, in addition to presenters after the presentation, are Liz Stad, as well as Michael Coterman. With that, I'm going to go ahead and turn over to Emile to kick us off.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyaki, and good evening again, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council. Staff from Community Development and Development Services are really excited to be here tonight, along with AP Heard from Skipstone Consulting, to present information on the Affordable Housing Next Right Work. We talked with council about this in April, earlier this year, during our Affordable Housing Strategy update. The goal at that time was to engage stakeholders to develop a manageable and supportable subset of housing approaches to move forward into the next right work. We want to thank council for providing staff the opportunity to gather information on a range of ideas that could be used in Bellevue relating to both housing and affordable housing. And we especially want to thank the stakeholders for taking time with staff and our consultant during the engagement efforts that incurred in late April through early June of this Staff are seeking direction from council tonight. We'll review staff's recommended actions to be included in the next right work to occur over the next 12 to 18 months, once they're launched. These would support a large body of ongoing work that we'll review with you tonight, and other next right work ideas that aren't selected tonight would remain for future discussion and consideration by council. The agenda for tonight is going to include a bit of background on this effort and its relationship to the Affordable Housing Strategy. We'll do a process overview of what we've done over the past few months. We'll review the key considerations in evaluating these next right work ideas. AP will then review the consultant effort and give some highlights of her analysis and findings. And then Trisna will review the staff recommendations and next steps. Little bit on the background of this work. The Affordable Housing Strategy and affordable housing continue to be a top priority for the city as a whole and the city council. The 2017 Affordable Housing Strategy did provide a great framework for implementation over a 10-year period. It did have a target of 2,500 units or beds over a 10-year period. And based on our most recent update with you, and even projects that have occurred in those intervening months, we are on track to exceed that 10-year target. So we have about a little over 2,000 new or preserved units or beds, and another roughly 700 units in the pipeline. So you can see just where we're at now. We're going to far exceed that 2,500 target. So now really is an opportune time to look at this, this target, and try and determine what should be the next right work over the next 12 to 18 months. At the, at the center of the past few months of work has really been the stakeholder engagement process. We heard some positive feedback during oral comments, as well as written communication regarding our efforts to engage the stakeholders out there. This has provided a great opportunity to review past, current, and new ideas, and what might make sense for Bellevue. They generally fall into three topical areas that do complement one another. There's a set about generating new revenues for affordable housing, increasing unit production for housing and affordable housing, and then streamlining permits and procedures. And while this is focused on the next right work, there is a large body of ongoing work relating to housing and affordable housing in the city. And tonight is the report back to council with staff's recommendations. This is the graphic that Trisna and I used on March 21 during our council visit on the Land Use Planning Initiative work plan for 2022 and 2023. It's noteworthy to point out a number of initiatives that relate to housing and affordable housing that are already underway, or were both recently launched as well. The Comp Plan Periodic Update is a very large body of work underway, and we'll have a number of community discussions regarding housing typologies and affordability across the city. The BellRed Policy and MAP amendments, that what we're calling the BellRed Look Forward, will be contemplated as part of the Comp Plan Update as well. And we also launched in late April, the Wilberton Vision Implementation, that will put in place the policy and ultimately code framework for our next new urban neighborhood in Bellevue. We also have the C1 Phase 2 work that is looking at additional development capacity for housing and faith-based properties in the single-family zone. And Trisna and the Development Services team are also working through the emergency housing, supportive housing, LUCA, as council is well aware of. The next right work during that presentation to council put an estimate of about two to four additional initiatives that could occur alongside this large body of ongoing work that the staff was doing. I want to take a moment just to walk through the overall process we took with the ideas for potential actions that the council could give us direction on. I have this listed out as a step one through five there in the middle of this slide here. We started back in our stakeholder outreach with 46 ideas, and this was really a combination of previous technical advisory group ideas from the original Affordable Housing Strategy. It had some ideas from council, included community ideas, and then other examples from, from other cities. So that was the initial 46 ideas indicated in box one there. During the stakeholder engagement process, we added roughly nine or 10 new ideas, so that brought us up to about 55 ideas that were discussed and contemplated. And in step three, AP took the 55 ideas and looked at some of the considerations and her expertise as a strategist to come up with what we're calling the top 16 ideas, and we'll get to those in a, in a number of minutes in the presentation. And tonight, you will see staff's recommended four actions that are part of the top 16. It is important to note that there's a number of items on the top 16 list that we are doing right now as part of things like the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. Step five in this, or excuse me, step four is council actually giving us direction on what you view as the best next right work to, to move forward with. It's important to note as well that any ideas that were brought up, discussed, contemplated during this effort are not lost ideas. So all these ideas could be brought back at a future time for council discussion and prioritization, as you see fit. I also did want to note one idea that, that council did discuss on May 9, when we launched the C1 Phase 2 effort. We do have additional information tonight that we're happy to share with the council at the end of this presentation. It's one that did not make the top 16 list, but there could be an adjustment to an already launched project that might meet some council priorities for modifying that C1 Phase 2 work. If council would like to discuss that, I'll be ready for that. This is the list of considerations that were given to AP during her, her analysis. She'll go into a bit more detail when she gets to her slides. And these are both a combination of standalone and in some ways consolidated measures that AP took the liberty of thinking through, how we can look at this whole range of considerations, think about things like the opportunity cost between doing different things, and come up with a set of ideas for council consideration in the top 16. So with that, I am going to hand it over to AP Heard. I want to thank her for helping us out. We're constantly trying to expand our staff capacity to do things, and it's great to be able to hire consultants to come in and help us get more work done in a short amount of period, and really focus on engaging our stakeholder community and having some strategic thinking about what's going to be best for the city of Bellevue moving forward. So hand it over to you, AP.
Which one is for?
The big one, yeah.
Thanks, Emile. Hello, council members. It's a pleasure to be here with you. Thanks for engaging me to help you and the city think through some of these strategies. You'll see on this slide a little bit of an outline of what I'm going to go over. Some of it, Emile, has already covered, so I'll try to skip through some of those parts. But I wanted to start out a little bit by describing the stakeholder engagement process. We reached out to a really broad group of stakeholders. You can see in the right-hand column who some of those are. And we realized in mid-May that we were underrepresented on the last three groups in that bullet list. And so in order to have more representative input, we actually did an outreach survey, and we conducted four more workshops to reach out to these groups. We, we did ask a question in our little survey to try to find other people, whether there were folks who wanted to live in Bellevue and couldn't afford to, and we got at least one response like that. But it was noteworthy that among the single-family homeowners who responded to that survey, I don't think any of them had bought their first home in the last five years, which is sort of speaks to the price point and the challenge of getting into this market for people who are younger. Because we were reaching out to such a broad range of stakeholders, we actually had a couple of different outreach tools. I'll show them on the next page, but one of them was a more open-ended question worksheet to ask people about the needs and priorities that they saw, both for subsidized affordable housing and for overall housing supply. And it also asked people a little bit about their experiences, whether they had suffered from housing shortage or not, but what they observed as some of the challenges facing the city. The other outreach tool that we had was a list, as Emile said, of about 46 strategies that are generally kind of implemented in different cities across the US. And there, we did provide space for people to contribute additional strategies on that list, and also in the open-ended questions, people contributed additional ideas and strategies, which we also evaluated. So you can see here, this is just a little snippet of the worksheet. There was actually on the left-hand one more space to answer the questions, but you can see there was some sort of visual questions about scale, some questions about the need and the orientation towards transit or not, and what people saw as the barriers and strategies. And then on the right, you can see, this is the list of all, just a snippet of the list of strategies. But one of the things that was quite fun here is we gave people a chance to say not just what they liked, but what they didn't like. And that was helpful to us in understanding not just where there was things that people supported, but also where there was relatively strong consensus. Because of course, when you know what some people like, you might have something that some people like a lot, but then there's also a set of people who really dislike it. And so those were things that we were considering. We also, I should say, received emails in addition to this, and feedback in phone conversations as well. Okay, so Emile touched on this, but where did these ideas come from? So some of them were things that staff, there was a list of about 10 items that staff brought to the process. There was also other items that had been discussed in other parts of the Bellevue process, though not necessarily part of the next right work. And one of the things that we thought is if we're going to do this big outreach effort, we should ask, you know, people in the community, it may be hard for them to understand, like, where does this slot into the city staff's process? Is this a LUCA? Is this a Comp Plan change? For most people in the community, they just think like, I want to give you direction about what I'd like to see. You can slot it in wherever you want. So that was one of the reasons for broadening the list, is that this is input that can be used really for a lot of ongoing city work. But we were asking people big questions about what they saw as the priorities, and what they saw as the more challenging things to do. Some of the ideas were proposed by council. There was definitely a handful of them that came by email, I think verbally, to staff, and so we added those in. And participants, as I mentioned, added in some of them. This is, I think this is, you know, not a concluding slide, but to me, this is a really important slide. Changing how we do things to get a different result is always difficult. And it's really difficult because people love what is today, and they cannot possibly love something that doesn't exist yet. And so I think one of the very challenging things for you as city councils is you have to bring people along to love things that are different than what they've known in the past. The reason that we have challenges around housing in the Pacific Northwest is because we have had policies for 70 years that restrict the supply of housing. In, right after the Second World War, in 1945, there were homes built in Mount Lake Terrace that were $5,000 each. They were built out of CMU, which is concrete mechanical units. They had two bedrooms, they had a bathroom, they had a little yard. And if you inflate that all the way to today's dollars using all kinds of inflationary indexes, you get to a price that's somewhere around $240,000. So if houses increased in value just the same as everything else, they wouldn't cost as much as they do today. They cost about five times more than that in Bellevue right now. And so there's a whole bunch of reasons we got to where we are, and then I think if we're going to change things, we have to think about why we're doing that. Why are we going to do this hard thing? A few reasons that we might do this hard thing is because people can't live in the community they grew up in. People live in cars. They spend their whole day trying to find a place to shower. There are people who are commuting for two hours a day each way, like four hours total to get to their jobs in Bellevue. And there are women, and there were four of them who brought this up, who've had to quit their jobs, who've had to quit their jobs because they cannot get around and get back to their childcare in time to pick up their children with all of the distance that they have to cover. So the human consequences of inaction here are, I just, I want to highlight them because so often we talk about equity, and we talk about community and access, and we, and we forget that, like, this really is super hard on people. There was some places where there was unbelievable consensus in this work. There was huge support for a housing levy. I was really surprised across the board that even like the business groups and the individuals, there was a few homeowners that didn't support it, but there was a lot of consensus around that. People rated the problem as severe or very severe. There was strong support for additional density around transit. Not, not people saying that everything had to be about transit, but about 75% of new capacity on transit, which is great, because you guys have six brand-spanking new transit stations that are about to open, and so the mobility capacity is there to support that growth. One of the things that was, that I mentioned before is that we were trying to understand not just where there was a lot of support, but where there was a lot of, a high level of consensus around that support, which, does that make sense? It's a little different thing, right? A high support is a high average score, and a high degree of consensus is the same for all you mathies out there as a low standard deviation. It means all your answers are grouped around that thing. So that was pretty important, because obviously it's easier to do things where there's support and consensus around that. The other thing that we did in addition to just kind of looking at the ratings that people gave things, we use this thing called natural language processing, which is when you look at verbal responses, and then you sort of tally up which things are coming up frequently, which themes are coming up frequently, so that you can take qualitative data and give it some kind of quantitative meaning. So we use that as well. Out of the about 56 total strategies, which was the 46 we started with, plus about 10 more that were articulated several times by participants, so out of the 56, we whittled it all the way down to 16. And so to me, it's important to realize that, like, when you make a bundle of 16, which was kind of my job as the consultant, that's kind of what I handed back to the staff, you're trying to find things that have high consensus and high support, and that sort of are balanced. So balanced in the sense of like, there's things that need revenue, and there's things that generate revenue. There's things that tax new development, but there's also things that ask the community to provide broad support. There's things that are helpful to increase production, and then there's things that are helpful specifically to affordable housing providers. So that 16 was kind of a balanced list, and I also, I know this is an eye chart, okay? And I tried and tried to figure out a way not to do this slide as an eye chart, but I wanted to kind of highlight for you that the columns at the top here are the criteria that the council provided to Emile the last time he presented, about three months ago. So you guys had asked us to come up with recommendations that considered geographic distribution. So you'll see there, we thought about things that So you'll see there, we thought about things that could happen everywhere, things that could happen near transit, things that could happen in single-family zones. You asked us to consider rental and ownership and we came up with a balanced list that considered rental and ownership. You asked us to consider different AMI levels, including things that were more deeply affordable and things that were missing middle or workforce housing. You asked about speed of entitlement and construction, things that increase the ability to attract capital, things that increase equity outcomes and sustainability outcomes. So this, while this is a challenging chart to read, I thought it was important to provide to you because if you cared about one of these things in particular, you can kind of have a quick reference about which, which of the sixteen strategies checked the box on things that you mentioned as being important to you. And then you can see we did a little process with staff where we talked about which of these things most appropriately could slot into the next right work and which of these things are really tied to other ongoing processes, which things are best done through other mechanisms like the comp plan. So I'm happy to come back and answer questions about this later, if there are any. And with that, I'm going to pass it to Trisna, who's now going to talk about how staff took this and then brought it down to four strategies. And you'll see these same strategies on Trisna's slide. It's formatted quite differently, but I just wanted to kind of reassure you so you can follow the breadcrumbs that the next page has the same sixteen strategies, just color-coded differently. There you go.
Thank you, AP. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Nunes, council members. You just heard from AP that the sixteen, the top sixteen that she just went through are the same that is listed on this table here. All the colors are different, so let me take a moment to just orient you to this table and then to orient those watching also to this table. So on the left-hand column, which is the next right work actions, those are the top sixteen, so there are sixteen items on this list. And they are categorized into the three categories that Emile spoke of earlier. So that's the white font with the black background. The first category are those that would generate revenue for affordable housing. The second category are those that would produce housing and/or affordable housing units. And then the third category are those that would streamline permitting or processes. So with that, as you can see, most of the items fall within that middle category of producing housing and/or affordable housing units. So in terms of the columns, on the right-hand side, there are three columns. The first one that's currently highlighted, the orange one, shows how we've rated, how these actions would impact, how impactful they are. So we kept the ratings fairly simple, low, medium, high. And they're really just intended to give you a sense of how these actions would perform relative to each other. The second column, that's now highlighted also, this one is the amount of effort we believe that we would take to accomplish each of these actions. And this effort includes the assigned staff working on it, as well as managers, other department staff, city manager's office, et cetera, all the way to planning commission and the city council and certainly, very importantly, the, the members of the public who wishes to participate and who we'd want to participate in these, in giving us feedback and input on these actions. The ratings here are also low, medium, high, where we just wanted to again, give a sense of how many of these we can complete in the, as part of Next Right Work, so the next twelve to eighteen months. And then the last column here shows if that action is already part of ongoing or scheduled work and there's a yes or no in this column. So where an action is part of ongoing or scheduled work, that's part of the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three work plan that Emile just walked us through just a little bit ago, that action is also highlighted in green. So as you can see, there's about half a dozen or so of these actions that are already part of ongoing work that the city has committed to doing in that twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three work plan. Out of those actions that are not part of the twenty-two, twenty-three work plan, there are four that we've highlighted in yellow and these are our recommended actions for Next Right Work. So the first is commercial linkage fees. The second is to eliminate barriers for micro apartments. The third is to allow higher density for residential, so you can really encourage residential development. And fourth is to reduce permit fees for affordable housing. You'll notice that the four recommended actions are spread across different workgroups, also not just within CD and DSD, but also just the divisions within those departments. Again, so that we can really commit and deliver on these recommended actions in the next twelve to eighteen months. So after your discussion tonight, we are looking for direction from council to conduct scoping and do some pre-launch work on those Next Right Work items that are selected. And we will return to council with that additional information and to formally launch these actions. At that time, if any of these actions are determined to not be feasible, either due to timing or scoping concerns or issues, then we'll want to swap those out with another one that's on the docket list. Lastly, we want to restate that, that the Next Right Work is really to supplement other ongoing projects, such as the comprehensive plan periodic update, Wilburton, Bell Red Look Forward and other policy and code amendments. So to close our presentation, our ask of council is to confirm the recommended list of Next Right Work actions to undertake in the next twelve to eighteen months with the remaining ideas for future consideration. Thank you for having us present this tonight. We're happy to answer any questions and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Great presentation. Nice to see you, AP. Thank you. So just to clarify, one, we can ask us to come back quarterly for updates and see the progress and tweak it if we need to. Two, anything not in the first tranche of Next Best Work does not mean we're not going to do it. It means we can come back and do it after twelve to eighteen months, depending on how soon we complete the first recommended items. So just wanted to give a big picture there. I'm going to call on Councilmember Stokes, then Deputy Mayor, myself, Robertson, Parkstil, Lee and Son. Councilmember Stokes.
Okay, thank you very much and I guess you know what I'm going to talk about. No, appreciate the, the presentation very much and, and, you know, this is, as I said, this is something we started, worked on for a long time, going back even before the affordable housing strategy. And it was, it was identifying strategies, not plans to be stuck on a shelf. And, and we agreed at that time, we knew we had to do things quickly and work on it. And five years later, it's gotten probably quadrupled, the pressure on that. And so I'm really excited to see this moving forward. I want to get something straight that I think just, I don't know if it's dawned on everybody because we're still looking at this as, we have four things we are promoted, are, are picked to work on now. The reality is, is I understand this, just that we all know, that the consultant report and, and the top sixteen ideas, we're not just saying, "We're going to do four things now and these others we'll get to later." What you're seeing here is that the top sixteen ideas are either ongoing work or part of the current twenty-two, twenty-three community development and the four are added to that. So it's not these four, we're not just saying, "We're going to do these four now and we'll do these others later." Is that right?
Uh, yes, that is correct. The, the yellow items are the, the new, the new items that we weren't currently working on. And then we do have a series of existing things that we're doing as part of the Bell Red Look Forward or Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update as examples.
And so the understanding is that, that we're, we do have sixteen items we're working on. We're adding four essentially to what we're already working on in various ways. I mean, that's exciting and that's, that's where I think, I think we need to be going.
Yeah, there are, there are five, there are five things on the list that are not recommended to move forward right now. So if you take the full sixteen, there's, um, what is it, three, four, five, six, uh, plus the four gets us up to eleven. So we have a series of green labeled things that are ongoing work, the four that are the Next Right Work and then there are a handful that are not moving forward right now.
Yeah, and, uh, well, yeah, the ones that are green and, so the green and yellow. So, I mean, I think that helps a lot in terms of looking at this. And that, that gives me a lot, lot more hope that we're on a path that is really going to make a difference. And I, you know, the mayor mentioned earlier, the numbers, we talked about the numbers of housing we've had, we've done. And we knew back in twenty-seventeen that two thousand new houses was, I mean, it was a lot more than we were doing, but we knew that wasn't adequate at all. So, and obviously the changes we have here in the last five years has really made us cognizant of what we really need to do. And the legislature's done, done a pretty good job of saying, "Okay, you need to step up." This is a, it's not just a city of Bellevue problem, it's not just a regional problem, it's not a county problem, it's a, it's a state problem altogether. So I think this is, um, it's really an amazing piece of work. And I noticed that, um, the interesting one is what, can you tell me a little bit about this, the huge support for enacting a housing levy?
So this was one of the ones that had very high support and a high level of consensus, like I said before. I'm, the risk of diving a tiny bit into tax policy. A housing levy, if you're trying to raise money to subsidize affordable housing, a housing levy peanut butters that capital raising, that tax raising over the existing tax base. And something like inclusionary zoning or a, or a commercial linkage fee says, "Okay, any new development is going to pay for those things." And in particular, the renters who live in buildings that have inclusionary zoning, the higher rent for the market rate units in those multifamily buildings will help subsidize the subsidized units in those buildings. So it's targeting a narrower segment and that's just a sort of tax policy decision. But I would say that the housing levy had quite broad support and there was quite a lot of support in, in some of the comments for something along the Seattle model, like people wrote in, "Do something like the Seattle model, it works very well."
Yeah, I mean, it is complicated a little bit by the fact that we're working on a parks levy coming up right now this year. But that's encouraging to know that down the line, the community and, and people seem to support that part because the money is, is just a huge part of this and it doesn't grow on trees. So unless you're harvesting a forest or something, but. Anyway, I, I, in terms of questions, I think you've laid this out very well. And I really, and I think the process that you've set up for this is, is excellent. And I think, I mean, this is a, this is really a policy issue, not just a, "Well, we should do this versus this" and what are the details and all that, because I think you've set that out very well. And I'm, I would be ready to go if all we were voting on was the, the things in yellow. I absolutely support those and I support it even more knowing that concretely that we're, we are going to go forward and gives me a lot more confidence that we're going to achieve our goals. It also means we're going to all have to work a lot harder than we've been working to get this place. So I'm, I'm ready to go on it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Stokes. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Boy, a lot of questions and comments on this one. And thank you, first of all, so much for the great work and the effort of this presentation. A lot of good stuff here, but I do have a couple of very specific questions regarding some of the, the key things on here. So, so number one, based on some feedback that we've got, I believe from multiple parties, is regarding the commercial linkage fees. So before this actually came back to us, did you check with legal to see if this was something that we could even consider at this time? Or is this something that might be dead on arrival and even if we did want to investigate it, we might not be able to do it due to state or federal law? Is that, is that something that we've already looked at or not?
Yeah, I can speak on behalf of staff in saying that we have not done that more rigorous review with our internal city attorney's office. So that, that would be something we would want to do and come back with some more information for council. Before that, we're actually initiated as a, as a effort from the, from the city council. So there, I think there's the seed of an idea here. It did rank well in, in AP's stakeholder process and was part of the top sixteen. But we, particularly that one, based on some public comments and knowledge of how other cities have done it, there is definitely some city attorney office interface we still need to do on that one.
Okay, so some public comments. So that gets me to one other question because we were talking about the different stakeholders and, and if you watch any of these meetings, you always know they're asking about outreach. And you specifically mentioned, AP, that you didn't hear a lot from homeowners and renters. You had to go out again. I'm concerned that.
Sorry, that's not totally accurate.
You said the bottom three, which was renters, homeowners and renters of affordable housing.
I think it was homeowners that were not neighborhood leaders. We did have a lot of input from the neighborhood leader homeowners. And then we, so there's a group of people who are sort of official neighborhood leaders. But we got their input, but not sort of regular homeowners who are not.
And you defined official neighborhood leaders as head of neighborhood associations? Or how do we describe that?
Heavily populated by that group, but also supplemented with some others. So we worked with our, you know, internal lists of engaged residents out there and had a starter list and, and engaged them. And then as AP said, there was some, some need for follow-up during our pretty targeted window to get the outreach.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're hearing the residents' voices.
And just to add a little bit more color to that, when the neighborhood leaders came, almost all of them self-identified as having lived here for eighteen years, twenty-five years, forty years, which is absolutely an important constituency. But we realized that in that group, we didn't have relatively recent arrivals or relatively newer homeowners, which seemed important as well.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And then the next question I had was, so on the top sixteen here, so there were a couple here, and I just want to make sure I understand this, there were a couple here that seemed to check all the boxes, right? So for example, encourage townhouse, row house development. Stars all the way across, didn't make it into the staff recommended. Now is that because that work is supposedly already being done through the comp plan?
Yeah, the, um, the townhouse, row house, the, uh, some of the other ones in that middle category really fit the comprehensive plan work that we're doing. We are on the schedule to come back to give an update on growth concepts to council on the, towards the end of this month. So we viewed a lot of those as really integrated into the work that we're doing on the periodic plan update and probably made most sense to keep part of that. Clearly, if council did want to accelerate anything or treat it separately, we're happy to respond to those types of questions, but we were viewing that as an ongoing effort.
Okay, but what I'm hearing from you then is that the plan is to complete and I guess implement those code changes necessary to address all the ones in, in green, correct? As part of the adoption of the comp plan?
The, the comp plan focuses on the policy work. The code typically is a step that happens after the policy. So the, the code is not adopted at the same time. It typically is a follow-up effort. We're happy to give more information on the exact timing of those. But for, for a number of those green ones in the middle category, there is significant policy work that, that does need to happen before we go out and, and actually do the code work on those.
Got it.
So hopefully that helps, Deputy Mayor.
Yep, no, that does certainly. I just want to make sure those items are properly put in their category and, and that's, you know, as Councilmember Stokes already pointed out, I mean, these are a lot of great, you know, a lot of great ideas, a lot of great potential policy options here. I look forward to you coming back quarterly and, and the next time when we have a chance to weigh in even further after you've done some further due diligence on these seeds of, of, of ideas. I particularly like all the ones that start with either encourage or incentivize. I think if you look at some of the best things that we're doing right now to create affordable housing in our city, MFTE program is probably on the top of the list and everyone is taking advantage of that in terms of developers are taking advantage of that. So that's what I'm looking for and encouraging here as much as, as much as possible. But again, great presentation, really making some great progress here. Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate this work very.
Very clear. I'm, I'm going to ask some questions and, and do some asks as well on work that we're already doing. I, I don't want to add anything that's going to delay, or, but you mentioned about the church properties, that we could tweak that a little without causing any delay or, or supplanting anything. So, the first one is, when we did East Main, we talked about a deed-in-lau, and that was in the development agreement, one of the options, but we don't have any way for somebody to take advantage of that, because it's not in the code. So, is there a way to advance that work without supplanting anything else?
I'll hand that over to Trisna and Liz, and you can talk about any process to do the deed-in-lau idea.
Thank you, Mayor. At this point in time, the deed-in-lau could be something that we start to look at through the Wilburton Code Initiative as we start to kind of figure out how to implement that. We do not currently have it in any of our codes where we have fee-in-lau systems, but especially with Wilburton and also the Bell Red Look Forward are two opportunities where we may be able to review that more in-depth and put that into the code as we move forward.
Yeah, so that's, I would like to, you know, whether we come back in 12 months and do that, or if we can slip it in now without disrupting anything, we did put it in East Main, I would think that would be a good opportunity to use it as well.
I'll just chime in to say also, I do quite a lot of work with the City of San Jose, and they have a fee-in-lau program. And they actually have staff authorization to accept deed-in-lau if that property is in their estimation and based on appraisal commensurate with the fee-in-lau, and it's in a location that would meet the city purposes. So, there may be a way to do this in a way that doesn't create a whole process around doing it, but where you have a fee-in-lau and you just authorize staff to consider on a case-by-case basis, and it might be expeditious that way.
Yeah, that's interesting.
And I think that's something that we can check with the legal department on and just see what would be involved in, in doing that, because it is essentially the same as the fee-in-lau, it's just another way of transferring that
Right.
Into a system. But I think we'd be looking at some type of a code change would not necessarily be a policy change.
Yeah.
But we'll look at it in the context of the other work that we're doing as well, and talk to legal and just see what might be involved in that.
Okay, thank you. In the yellow recommendation, one of the top four, allow higher FAR for residential or unlimited blah, 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 I would like to look at that in all our growth areas, including downtown. I don't know if you already were going to include downtown for that, but I would like to see that. Councilmember Zahn, when we had the church property conversation, talked about expanding the distance from TOD or from transit to five or 1,000 feet. And I'm interested in looking at 500 feet, expanding that. I know it's going to the planning commission, I don't know that that's going to be a big deal to increase that distance that we allow the church properties to take advantage of the development. But I'd like to do it to 500, because as we get further into the neighborhoods, I'm really excited about the option to incentivize affordable senior housing, and I think that's a longer discussion, and I think that that's, I want that to go through a whole process. So, I'm not asking for that. Let's see, number four, the reducing the permit fees for affordable housing, oh, no, excuse me, it was the commercial linkage fees. Do we have, like, if that, if somebody comes back and says, you just can't do that, I don't expect they will, but if they did, do you have an alternate to put in there? So, can we have an optional one that we agree on? And then, number five, just again, encouraging a quarterly report from staff, so we can see our progress and see if we want to do anything differently as we move forward. So, those are my comments.
And I, I think I can address number four
Okay.
Very briefly. So, on the, the, the commercial linkage fee, we're viewing that differently than the other three recommendations? Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. I can never tell if I'm shouting too much. That probably won't work. So, for the other three, if the council says, yes, we want you to come back with these and do the scoping on the other three recommendations, we would come back to you with at least two of them, possibly three of them, ready to launch. With the commercial linkage fee, for some of the reasons that have been raised, we want to do some additional research on that before we go too much further with it. And we would come back to you with that information to say, this is what it would take to do this, these are some of the implications, and it may be that it's going to take more than the 12 to 18 months, which we would say, probably not best to do it now, or we could start on it now, but understanding it wouldn't get done in that period. So, and, and the council could add something else to the list at that point, or if there's something else you wanted us to scope this evening, that you wanted us to add to the list to scope this evening, we could do that as well and bring that back to you at the same time.
Okay.
So, we're treating that one a little bit differently for that reason.
Right. Well, I, I like the ones that you've highlighted. I am fully supportive of that, and I like that we can come back and look at it again and reprioritize the next four, whatever, that we want to implement without too much time going by. But I'm kind of eager to start moving on something. Okay, Councilmember Robertson, followed by Councilmember Barxale.
Thank you. I will try to be expeditious with my, but I might need to have it come back around, because I have a lot of things to say. So, first, thanks for, for this. On the top 16, I, I share Deputy Mayor's comment of five of these items have the four stars, yet I think only one of those five is flagged for next right work. So, why is that? And these are the encourage townhouse, rowhouse development, DADUs, ADUs, duplex, triplex, quadplexes, eliminate parking minimums, which isn't even flagged for doing at all, ease of rezones through broader comp plan designations, create a comp plan, contract rezones, and then the planned action EIS. Those all five have the four stars, which means they have speed of entitlement and construction, ability to contract capital and scale up, equity outcomes, and sustainability outcomes. So, why, I guess, which one of those are we doing in the next 12 to 18 months, if any? And why not? Why, why weren't these the five that are recommended instead of the other four?
Yeah, I can speak for the, the, the three in the middle category. Again, we looked at what efforts we already had underway, and as we're developing those growth concepts as part of the comprehensive plan update, the townhouse, rowhouse development is integral to that, thinking about significant new opportunities in the city for that to happen. So, there's a clear, you know, policy component to that, and some economies of scale of looking at it as a, as a package with the, with the planning commission. The recommendation from, from AP was to treat the DADUs, ADUs, duplex, triplex, quadplex, and the mechanism for separate ownership as one. So, one of the details of her report was, don't, don't initially start breaking that up. So, we, we felt that as a, as a body, that was a high level of effort, all things considered, and, you know, there were a couple others in that middle category we thought would be more basically effective to do now, because there are things that we weren't already doing. So, again, the DADUs one falls into the category, we're doing some work on that already. The, the increased use of the rezones, we are, we're looking at what's primarily a one-to-one relationship in the comp plan of comp plan designation to zoning designation. There are some exceptions, so there are some cases where people can do rezones, but we're really taking a, a serious look at, can we expand that significantly in the, in the comp plan update? So, that one, we felt it would just be problematic to move forward and accelerate right now on its own without having the luxury of, of a more thorough review, the SEPA analysis that would need to go along with it. But we see that as a, a, a significant policy piece for the commission and ultimately the council to talk about.
So, those three are all part of the comp plan, then?
Yeah.
The DADUs, the townhomes, and the contract rezone, those are part of the comp plan?
Yeah, ease of rezones. The parking, we had some, some good discussions when we were forming our staff recommendation about should that one move forward as a recommendation or not. We, we were looking at the level of effort on that and the potential impact, and acknowledging the, the commission and council just reviewed parking not too long ago, with about six months ago or so, did, did make some reductions to residential and affordable parking. Clearly, didn't go down to no minimum, but there was some relatively recent work on the parking front, so that's why I didn't really tick up to a staff recommendation on that one.
And the planned action?
I'll turn, I'll hand it over to Liz and Trisna for that one.
Thank you. Sorry. A little awkward, too many people at the stable, I guess. The planned action, we did not move forward at this time, that is something that we can move in, but in the next 12 to 18 months, we felt that we had so much other work moving forward, but that does stay on the list. This is by no means falling off the list, and certainly is something that we can move into our work plan in the next, you know, in the next year even, as we start to look forward on that. But at this point in time, we did not feel that we had the capacity to take that on, as well as some of the others, that that level of effort with the city attorney's office and with the same staff from Development Services was going to be quite high.
Okay. So, on the green items, the six items that are going to be part of the comp plan, I understand that the comp plan should be delivered by second quarter 2024, but these won't be done by then. They will then need to have land use code done. So, are we thinking that these six items might be done by, what, second quarter 2025? I mean, what's the best-case scenario? And I mean, I guess, what's the worst?
Yeah, I, I can start off and then have Trisna and Liz chime in. We're, as we get towards the ending part of the comp plan update process, so it's, it is roughly a little less than two years from now that we've committed to deliver a adopted plan, so our target date is no later than the end of May 2024. Even though the state pushed out their deadline another six months, we're sticking with our original deadline.
Good.
We, we'd probably be, you know, definitely looking at how we can mobilize the, the code writing staff, which is Liz and Trisna and the team. And as we get the, the policy direction kind of firmed up with the planning commission, and then have a nice draft, recommended draft that goes to the council, we can actually start some of that work on the, the LUCA's that actually implement the policy direction. So, we don't need to wait until May of 2024 to start the work on it. We want to, we're looking at overlaps, essentially.
So, end of 2024? What are you thinking?
You know, it's really hard to put a date certain on that, Councilmember Robertson. I do think as part of our, as you probably remember, when we talked about the land use planning initiative process and the process improvement that happened there, there is quite a bit of overlap that we now do with community development and development services staff, so that we're in tandem as much as possible. So, we do anticipate starting that work as soon as we can, as soon as that, those policies are firmed up, as Emile noted. It really depends also on exactly what those policies are as to what the code amendment scope would be. So, that's the part that I hesitate in giving a certain date on when we feel like all of those items would be complete. But I think the commitment is that we would work on them as soon as we can in tandem and overlapping with the policy work.
And picking up on Trisna's point, I think once we get closer to the adoption of the comprehensive plan, and we have a better sense of those policies, then we can identify which of those codes we can start a little bit sooner and, and possibly end faster, and we can come back to you at that time. We'll have a better idea at that time, but right now, it's just difficult to say what's going to be involved in writing those.
So, it makes it really difficult for me as a council member to say what I want fast-tracked in the next 12 to 18 months, when there's a lot of things that are in the green shaded category that I think need to be done sooner rather than later, and they're going to be wrapped into the comp plan, which we know will be done in two years' time, but then, but people won't be able to start releasing capital, capital and investing and doing projects under them, because the land use code won't be written. So, it's, 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 it's distressing to me where we want to fast-track stuff, but I want to fast-track the stuff that's going to be most effective. And some of the stuff that's most effective is on the green shaded area. So, and Mayor, just interrupt me when you want me to take another turn later, but um
Well, hold it. I'm going to interrupt you now.
I have a lot more to say, and I want to weigh in on
It's a good stopping point for you.
And talk about staff capacity and resources as well.
And we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
If you can finish. Okay, hold on. Sorry, lost my list. Councilmember Lee, followed by, no, nope, Councilmember Barxale, followed by Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Thanks for the presentation, thanks, AP, for your work as well. I want to build on a couple of comments. One, Councilmember Robertson's, Robertson's comment around the, what I brought up earlier in terms of characteristics, opportunity costs, and I think that kind of builds on the point that she was making. So, I, I think there are a couple of, some of these items here are, if we don't take action on those in the near term, development is continuing to happen, and we miss an opportunity to get affordable housing. So, one of the, one of the items that I'm interested in here especially is the item five, surprise, surprise. And specifically interested, I think, in what, as you, as you're doing the scoping work, what, if any, part of that could be advanced or expedited? So, I, I think you are coming back anyway at some point with what's possible or what's doable near term versus longer term, so I'd be interested in that one. And then, the second piece around the commercial linkage fees, I think the mayor brought up, if that one's not possible, what other item could fill that? And one, one item that came up in the comments, and I know, and I read your comment about it, AP, in the report, in your report, was a mandatory affordable housing. And I know it's not popular, but I guess just for the sake of a full picture, I would be interested in how that and the commercial linkage fee compare, especially if Arch is considering a housing levy, which means it's going to be spread across the residence. And so, if we want to have revenue for, or funds for affordable housing, considering it from the residence, but also from the private sector too, and I think that might be, I, I'm really just interested in sort of how that might relate between the two of those, maybe as a follow-up, not necessarily, unless you have a response now.
Well, I, I think, to me, the, the most interesting tax distinction is the one that I mentioned, where two of the sources, a commercial linkage fee and mandatory inclusionary zoning, you're trying to get it from the new projects, which I think there's often a sense that, like, then it comes out of the developer's pocket. And as someone who's a developer, I need to, like, correct that mischaracterization, because developers use institutional capital. That capital goes to the place where they can get the best return for their pension fund, so they have a fiduciary obligation to other people so that those people can retire. And so, what really happens is the cost gets passed, it either impacts the land cost of it, or gets passed on to the people who will rent those buildings. And so, the question is, you know, can you confer enough additional benefit in enough zone to offset that? Otherwise, your rents for commercial or your rents for market rate renters are going to go up, and they are going to bear the burden of creating your affordable housing supply, which is a thing that only a city council can determine. And then, in a, in a housing levy, you're, because it's based on the property tax value, you're essentially taxing the people who are already there, who may have had a lot of asset appreciation. So, it's a little bit, it's a different tax policy decision.
Yeah.
But there is a lens through which you might say, I have to add this, there's a lens through which you might say that inclusionary zoning is more regressive than a housing levy, in the sense that the people who are paying the housing levy are people who generally are owners and have substantial assets, whereas if you're passing it on to renters, they're the very people who are trying to save to own a home. So, it's just worth considering.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Followed by Councilmember Zahn.
I just want to state one more time that the city of Bellevue staff are doing wonderful stuff. I mean, we just heard, you know, earlier that we have done so much with affordable housing, of course, more to come. And even based on the program we already have, but even before that's finished, you know, that's going to continue. You're already coming up with this new right, you know, ways, I think that's, that's great.
Work.
Work, that's good, new right ways, new right works. Work, that's good, new right ways, new right works. A couple of questions for our information gathering. One is, just curious, when you did the implement commercial linkage fees, you have included, I'm sure, the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce and developers in your communication. What is the response that indicated it's high on your list of the 16? They just wrote a memo indicating that, well, they're not really supportive of that idea. So how did that weigh in terms of, you know, that population that's mostly, most impacted?
So there was no one idea that was totally universally popular. So all ideas would require some consensus building. And I would say that a commercial linkage fee was absolutely, you're spot on, less popular with some of the business interests. But compared to some of the other strategies, it had a higher degree of support across the whole spectrum of who we talked to and a higher degree of consensus than some of the other ideas. So this was absolutely a relative ranking and I wouldn't want to represent that there was any of the ideas that were, you know, an absolute winner. But I think that's also, in my comments, I've talked about the 16 being a balanced list. So one of the tricky things in whittling from 16 down to four is when you have 16, you've got this list that sort of scratches a lot of the different itches, if you will. And then one of the challenges, and I wasn't part of this, of the staff bringing it down to four, is it's hard to recreate that balance between all the different council goals and the sources and uses of funds and the business interests and the resident interests and all those things. And that's not a critique of staff, that's just a comment about the nature of the process.
Very good. Thank you for the explanation because this is very sensitive for some of us. It's a policy issue and we are making solid policies. So thanks for that, you know, I want to emphasize. I feel that similar to Councilmember Robertson said, there are certain things that, to me, it's obvious that streamlining permits and procedures, that seems to be no brainer. It's going to be controversial. It's something the city should do. It's our responsibility. It helps improve our efficiency. We are a city of efficient government, you know, all that stuff. And it's under our control, you know, we can allocate our resources, but it's something for us to determine, we have to talk about. But I would imagine anything that has potential impact and it's not out of the question of, you know, the impossible efforts, we should stop working on those things, right? Because we don't need to say, well, we got to do it tomorrow, right? But it has, should be on the list. When the opportunity comes, when we have the staff available, we need to be working on those. And they all seem to have pretty good rating, right? And the, you know, so I would make that like a comment. Whether you're going to do or not depends on our resource availability. You mentioned about city council time, public agency time, but you know, it's within our control. So I think that's one. The other one is, the, I didn't say it, but you know, the commercial linkage fee, it is a sensitive thing, you know, the same thing as mandatory inclusive, you know, zoning, you know, so the same thing. So I think we need to really have a serious consideration, discussion on what the policy is before we even know whether it's legal or not legal. You know, so that's my comment. One other thing, I believe that nobody has mentioned, but I think the mayor may have mentioned it, it's like increasing zoning in downtown in high rises, you know? I think that's a good thing because we have probably the most efficient way of increasing housing units when we're building, you know, taller buildings, even though they may be more expensive. But I think that can be accommodated in ways we can figure out, how do we get more money to do, whether the private developer might be able to do it with incentive or maybe the city can do something, whatever. So I think there's opportunity. So I think that would be, because we are building a lot of commercial properties and they're all very, you know, I think desirable, it's spread out wherever and without going to the residential neighborhoods or whatever. Let's see, another way is, also you mentioned, another question for our consultant. Interesting, I don't know whether I called that right. You said not a single person who bought home in Bellevue in the last two years. Is that true?
So we weren't, I don't think we were able to find anybody in our outreach who had bought their first home in Bellevue in the last five years. So there, I think we had a couple of people who had bought in Bellevue in the last five years, but they had purchased their first home more than 10 years ago. So that means that they came to Bellevue with a lot of equity built up already.
So it's a second home, they already have equity. Yeah. Okay. That's reasonable assumption. That's my question and comment and...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zahn?
Yeah, I want to thank you for this recommended list. I mean, it's really obvious that you've put a lot of work and effort and really thoughtfully considered how we actually create more housing and more affordable housing and really throughout the city and looking at that balance. And I really appreciate my colleagues for really talking about the complexity and the nuances of how we move from where we are today forward, because I don't think that these are easy policies to ultimately land on something that has the right balance and yet moves with the very urgency on focusing on outcomes and impact. And I do want to really stress that I think Councilmember Barxale talked about, the moving with urgency as well as Councilmember Robertson of how we, how we make sure that we don't take so long in getting this work done, that we've lost the opportunity as housing continues to be built to create more housing and more affordable housing at the same time. It's a, I always think of it as a yes and, and that this is ultimately about people. We're talking about people. It can seem like we're just talking about like esoteric things, but these are people and their lives that we're talking about. I appreciate your clarifying that those seven green items are currently underway. So that's good to know that what we're doing is validating that those seven things we're working on in green are still important, matches what we're hearing from the community and all of the stakeholders, as well as these additional ones. I am concerned because when we had our briefing, what I was told is, you know, really if, if we had a senior who wanted to age in place and submit a permit for a dadu, you're, we're talking about 2025. So that's three years away before we really move forward and that is, I think, too long. You know, we're hearing from the community that, you know, if they, seniors want to age in place, they want to have their grandkids come back, their kids here, be able to support teachers and others, that, that duration just doesn't work. So with Councilmember Robertson, I want to understand if we had more staff resources, what could we actually do more concurrently than we currently are recognizing that it is both a heavy lift for staff, for us, planning commission, as well as the community? And yet there's a part of me that thinks this is actually community building because when we actually go out and talk about this work of how we create all different housing choices throughout the city, we're actually going to build community while we're having these conversations. So I think we want to lean into that and figure out how we actually, you know, go all hands on deck. Mayor, I appreciate your wanting the option of the 500 feet. I might ask that it's a yes and because I would like us to also look at a quarter mile walk shed to transit, to look at that C1, because I think that, you know, that's an opportunity to look at how we might be able to minimize parking and be able to build more housing, which then leads to, the ones that had a lot of stars, I know several of you brought this up as well, I guess I'm also struggling with why we wouldn't move forward with minimizing, eliminating minimum parking requirements for residential as part of this current next right work, especially if we're going to do that tough discussion on the commercial linkage fee and mandatory inclusionary housing. You know, it's a balance of what we give versus what we get. And so I think we need to incorporate the, how we actually streamline the code and the permit so that when we are talking about what we want to get, we're actually, we actually have more to give or enough to give to be able to get. So somewhere there, I think that we probably have more discussion to be had, even though I know it's adding more on the plate of staff. So I look forward to hearing more from my colleagues.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go back around and if you can hone it in, we have a recommendation of four first projects to work on. If you agree with those four, if you want to tweak it a little, if we can have some kind of consensus, I'd love to hear it. So Councilmember Stokes, we'll start again with you.
Yeah, a couple of questions and I'm still thinking we're, we're all not quite consistent on what, what goes first and everything like that. I think that would help to look at that. And one of the things that, looking at this is, I noticed of the four we're picking, you have two that are high and high, both on impact and level of effort, and then two that are low and low. So you've got a couple, we could, not going to have a big effect and we can do it pretty quickly. I'm just kind of, just thinking about this, listening to everybody else is, how did, I mean, it's good to put those on there and we have some others that are low. I'm just concerned that we have these other things in place and how we actually going to coordinate all of these in a way. And I just don't think we have, I mean, I'm hoping we're not just saying, we're going to do these four, a couple of them which apparently won't, is not a whole lot, not going to make a lot of difference when it comes down to it, as opposed to a number of other things that we're, by 2023, we're going to get a lot of these things done. If we don't, we're not, we could do these four and not do the others and we'd have some movement, but it's not as strong. And I noticed there were recommendations, the ones with the stars, there's some things in there that weren't considered. But anyway, I just want to make sure that we're not setting up this in a way that seems to be contrary to what you're actually saying you're doing here. Again, it says these are, these are ongoing work and part of the current plan and we're going to work these other pieces into that, but we're not going to, these aren't going to be the focus and everything else dropped. I think we need to clarify that, so.
Can you, would you like to clarify that?
I would, I would love to try, Mayor. Thank you. So, and I appreciate the comments and the questions, Councilmember Stokes, because it's important that we understand what all is involved in this list. And I think we've talked about that this evening, the council, I think, has identified the fact that we've got several things we're already working on or are part of our program. Those are the green items. The staff is recommending the other four items that are in yellow. To your point about, two of them are low, low, and two of them are high, high, part of what we have to look at as staff is what we have the capacity to do over that next to 12 to 18 months. And going back to one of the slides that Emile showed in the presentation, we have all those other things that we're working on. We set aside a certain amount of capacity to do this work. So staff will be looking at what the direction we get from the council this evening, which items you would like us to move forward and come back to you with that balance and say, these are the things that we can do within that 18 months. These are the things that would take longer and we could still work on them, we just may not get them done in that amount of time. Some of them will take a policy change. A lot of the things in the green are going to require a policy change, whether it's part of the comp plan or whether we do that sooner, will make a difference in how much we can get done as well. Others will just require code work and those we might be able to get done a little bit faster. But that's the kind of information that we'll come back to you with. What we're hoping to get from the council this evening for staff direction is, what are the items that you want us to come back with a scope to be ready to launch? What are the items that you want us to look at, you know, that maybe aren't those four? They're on the list of 16, but they're not those four that we're recommending, that you would like us to come back with a scope to see if you want to continue, want us to continue on and then launch that work? And we'd like to keep that to a manageable number. So we're saying we could, we think we can do those four in the way that I've described them to you, with the commercial linkage fee being a little bit different. If there's a couple others you want us to scope to come back and say, this is what it would take, but it would mean we can't do these others at this time, that would be part of that discussion that we've, we've bring back to you. Does that help to, because the question you're asking is about the balance and that's what we're, we'll be trying to figure out as well when we do that scope.
Yeah, the other thing, and listening to everybody else and looking at this too, is again, at least strengthen the idea that what you're recommending that you focus a little more on is actually as important, is actually more important than other things lined out here. And it's an idea of what, if you were just looking at this from a standpoint of what, what can we do that will move the process along and make more impact in a reasonable time period? And knowing that if we don't do something in the next couple, three years, we're going to be way behind and a lot of this work is just going to go by the wayside. And so that's my concern is, if you balance the needs of the staff and what they can do at the same time, what is really, what are the things that really will make an impact in the next two to three years in affordable housing? And, because that's the big issue. It's going to get worse. And I think the information's here, it's just how do we, how do you parse it and how do you come look at it? And what is the overall, what is our overall goal? Is it just to do a lot of good things at a certain time period or is it to actually make a significant, very significant impact on homelessness and affordable housing? And homelessness is getting people in housing and then they ask to be affordable, but that is a, and it's not just for people who are homeless, it's people who are, you know, in the workforce. So, and it's going to increase if we don't get in front of it. I just want to make sure that what we're doing is not, is, that has that real, that's the lens. We want to make, we want to be, we want to do it better than anybody else because we can, but the real reason we want to do this is because we need it for people and need it for the community to continue. And so that's, that's what I'd like to see is, is how do you balance?
And I think we've, what we've tried to present here is to give you that information so that you can see which ones the staff thinks could have the highest impact, understanding it's going to, may take more effort to get us there as well. So it's really looking at what are the council's priorities? Because you're absolutely right, there are things that, the priorities may change over time. In three years, the priorities may be very different. What are, what are the things that are the priorities for the council at this time that you want us to work on for those next 12 to 18 months? And that may be the four that we've recommended, it may be accelerating some of the things that are in green, but we can come back to you with that information.
Okay.
Could I make a small comment in response to the conversation? So I know that I'm thinking in facilitation mode as opposed to consultant mode here, but one of the things that I'm hearing a lot of the council members say is that we want to do more things faster. And I'm hearing the staff say that there, that the pipe that we can push things through is only this big, right? That we, you can push four things through this pipe in the next 18 months and that's it. And I don't know if any of you read the Atlantic article that was in your extra readings, I suspect you're all very busy, but the Atlantic article that was in the council supplementary readings was about how we've created processes that not only limit our land use capacity, but they limit our ability to make land use changes that we might want to make to increase that capacity. So we have processes and cities have processes, this is not unique to Bellevue, that even limit how quickly we can change things that we want to fix. And that's what we're all coming up against here in this meeting. And so one interesting thought that I've had is it might be interesting to have the staff come back and scope these four items, but also scope what would it take to make that pipe bigger? And then you would know what is it going to take to push more things through it, which might be things that even you need to authorize, that the staff can't go ahead and change without your okay. But if you knew what it would take to make that pipe bigger, that might be the first meta question.
Yeah, that's really good. Thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll be brief and I'll try and keep it very tight and focused here as it starts to get later. Thank you. And I, by the way, I always start that usually when I... So let's continue to focus on those... So let's continue to focus on those items at that, and for the most part, I think you have, but focus on those high level of success items. Focus on those items that are going to encourage and incentivize. Focus on the opportunity costs and those actions that can have the biggest impact in those 12 to 18 months. And let's get some easy wins right out of the gate, too. I think someone here, you know, I think could be, I mean, I know staff is stretched, but removing the barriers for micro apartments, reducing permit fees for affordable housing, expedite the permitting for affordable, I can see that one being a little bit longer, but still. And I would say that of the four here that you've suggested, I would take off the implement commercial linkage fees, because I think there's a lot of legalities around that, and I think we're also asking for a fight. So I don't really see that as a good path for the next 12 to 18 months. Why don't we instead put on there that we look at capacity? Just as was discussed just now, how do we add capacity to all of these things? Be it staff, be it consultants, be it working with partners, because that's going to get us to where we want to go. We can talk about all these ideas, and there's a lot of great ones, but unless we have the capacity to actually work on them, more than just, it's, you know, we're going to be talking again in the next 12 to 18 months about, okay, what's our next, next actions? Because we weren't able to accomplish most of them the last 12 to 18 months, because we didn't have the capacity. So I think our focus of one of these four should be just on that. How do we expand capacity? Because as Councilmember Barxdale and Robertson had mentioned, now is the time to get this done. We, there is such an opportunity cost here right now, and we're behind, and we need to get ahead of it, or we're never going to create the amount of affordable units that we truly want to create in the city, you know, across these vast different opportunities and actions that we have before us. So I would, I would add capacity as that fourth item. That's my suggestion to my, to my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
And under three minutes.
Oh, good job. All right. I'll just say, I, you know, I appreciate the recommendation. I think, like everybody, I'm very eager to move forward. I know that anything we don't do in the first year, we will get back to. I am very interested in the capacity analysis. So I don't know if I can add that on to the four. You'll have to check your capacity. But I, I like the recommendation, and I like capacity analysis. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to weigh in on three things. One is the next right work, what we should prioritize. Two, I want to weigh in on some of the discussion that we're having with the comp plan. And three, I want to talk about capacity. So first, I couldn't agree with Deputy Mayor Noonhouse more. The linkage fees are problematic to me as next right, not as next right work, because they don't work unless you, and they aren't legal, most likely, unless they're tied to an increase in density or intensity. And so the increases in density and intensity are being considered in the comp plan. So how can we do the linkage fees ahead of that? I mean, we just, I just don't think we can. So if we want to revisit linkage fees as part of the land use code, implementing the comp plan with greater intensity, that should be revisited then and not now. So I would remove that from the next right work. To the streamlining, I would add number 10, which the, which AP encouraged us to link, which is not just reducing the permit fees for the affordable housing, but also number 10, simplify the permitting process and expedite permitting with specific time goals for processing. That was recommended. So I think we should add number 10 to number 14 in the next right work, and take 11, which is linkage fees, off. So that's what I would move forward now. With regard to the comp plan and talking about the different missing middle, the row houses, the duplexes, triplexes, ADUs, et cetera, I would like to add to that as part of the comp plan, other types of housing in single family. We, years ago, when I was first on the planning commission, we had a, someone come to us, they could have built, I think, three McMansions on a piece of property, and they asked for a comp plan amendment to build eight homes that were no more than 1,800 square feet. I voted yes on that, and council agreed, and that's called the botched family rezone back in about 2003. And I'd like to see more of that. We have heard from neighborhood residents that they would love to see smaller homes, maybe more of them on the same amount of land, but as opposed to McMansions. I think if those type of innovative or options, optional housing is not included in the row houses, DDU's, et cetera, discussion on the comp plan, they need to be included, because that's the, one of the ways that seniors can age, you know, they might still want their garden. I'm definitely going to want a garden when I'm, when I'm getting smaller, but I may not want to do it in a two-story house on a quarter acre lot.
Can you clarify which one you're talking about now?
I'm talking about comp plan. It's not on here.
Okay.
There's the, there's the duplexes, triplexes, quadruplexes, row houses, I'm saying. We need to also be looking at different single-family housing types, allowing additional density in exchange for smaller scale. And I use that one example from about 2004, when that was done. So I'd like to add that as part of the missing middle.
Would that be any part of eight? Number eight?
Number eight.
I think it is the intent of three and four, that include the possibility of different configurations. And I'll also just say that number six does involve, which is one of the ones that's in yellow, does involve reducing dwelling, eliminating dwelling unit per acre limits, which would also be supportive of that goal that you're articulating.
Super. Just wanted to make sure that I verbalized it, in case it wasn't included in what we're looking at. I think that there's, that could be a really good thing for the future of the city. I also would support doing Plan to Action EISs. I've been told it's too late to do it for Wilburton, which is unfortunate, but I definitely think we should tee that up for the Bell Red Look Forward and any TOD update that we do. A Plan to Action EIS is a great way to go.
And where is that in this?
That's number 15.
Okay.
And contract rezones, number eight. I definitely would like to, I'm not saying initiate those now, but I definitely, those are important, I think.
Can you, can you specify, like, what you'd like to see right now?
I did. I started with that.
So go back to it.
I'll go back to that. What I want to see right now is the three things you listed, not including linkage fees, but to the streamlining, which is number 14, I want to add number 10.
Yeah.
Those were two meant to be linked together. And then if there's time, I'd like to see the contract rezone added to the list, if we have the capacity, but I think you're going to have to come back on that.
Okay, thank you.
So I started with that, and I said, talked about the comp plan, the things I want to see. Now I'm just going to close with capacity. I'd like to see, you come back with a capacity analysis. I'd also like to see what we can do with more money. We have had some of our partners offering significant funding to us without strings attached, they're not getting a special privilege, to help fund some of this work, and we aren't taking it. We, and I'd like to see a consideration of that. If private parties want to give money to the city as a donation to help us fund this faster, what does that look like? And I definitely want to see a line item in the budget for accepting donations for this, for this purpose. So, thank you.
Okay, so hold on for just a minute while I write some things down.
I was trying to be fast.
No, you're doing a good job. I just want to keep track of, okay. Hold on. Lumber Barxdale.
Thank you, Mayor. So I didn't keep track of each of the items, but I will say, I know we said three out of the four, removing the linkage fees, but I think for that one, it was just about figuring out what's possible. So, I mean, I guess I would still be interested in knowing what's possible before we make a decision, especially given that in terms of funding, it's a key source. And then we can compare it with other private, and so forth, what, what the outcome would be based on, compared to those other funding sources. And I had mentioned five before, but I was looking at the action, so scoping, encouraging the ADUs, ADUs, and duplex, triplex, and happy to add what Councilmember Robertson said in terms of looking at additional housing types as well, and seeing how we can accelerate that. I think that's all I had.
All right, so we're seeing some support for adding 10, and we're seeing some support for removing linkage fees. We have some support for capacity analysis. Councilmember Lee.
Mayor, could I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Could I ask you which number 10 you're referring to?
The one.
On this sheet. Oh, on that sheet, okay. I'm looking at a different, I'm looking at that one rather than the star chart. Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Lee.
We got her, thank you.
Okay, I support removing commercial linkage fees. I support Councilmember Robertson's, including 10 and 14 combined. And actually, I believe that within streamlining permits and procedures, there's one others is completing Plan to Action CBA review. You know, that one is within our city's capacity. You know, I mean, that's why I'm supporting capacity. After we talk about all this, we're going to realize we need capacity. So I think it's going to be improved. It has to be in order to do these things. So I like to include complete Plan to Action CBA review, because I can see that you put in level effort medium, and you can have potential impact medium for a city effort that's pretty decent. Let's see, and I think, I like the, also, we already, some, I believe, I like, eight is already included, so sorry. The other one is encourage, four-star, is it in complaint, encourage townhouse, rowhouse development? Is it already included, or no?
That's in the work program for the comp plan.
It is included, okay, so. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, thank you. So let's see, what, so I like the one about simplifying the permit process and expediting permit for affordable housing and adding that item to the mix. I also agree with looking at our budget to see if we can add more resources, especially to, that's the lean thinking, right? How do we unkink the pipe? How do we make the pipe bigger so we can get more water through? And to that end, I'm also, you know, maybe it doesn't fit into this exact next right work, but it seems to me, if we can simplify the land use code, then everybody wins, right? Because when I think about this, it's not just the people that are trying to develop, it's our own staff, right? Every time we have inefficient processes, we're actually creating more work for ourselves as well in the entire process. And so I really think it's important to actually have that as part of the next right work. And I wonder if that could be a bucket of work that we could bring some limited duration staff or consultant to support, how we might simplify the land use code related to that. I also really like eliminating the minimum parking. I mean, I know we recently went through that process, but I keep thinking about the fact that, you know, that balance of how we actually allow developers to figure out what the right market is for parking is a give that we can provide while we look at, right, the, I want to understand what's possible with the commercial linkage fee before we abandon that as a nonstarter. And what I want to understand is, within all these others, is mandatory inclusionary housing already one of the green items that is on the list? Is it incorporated within that, or is that a, would that be one we would add?
Mandatory inclusionary did not rise to the top 16 in the consultant process. The, I think it remains to be seen during the comp plan process that we just started, how that comes up in the public dialogue. So I think it remains to be seen in the, in the overall comprehensive plan update, how it comes up, but it is not on this page right now, so it's not part of the 1 to 16 next right work.
Is it something that, along with the commercial linkage fee, it's, it's that whole piece of work of really understanding what could be done related to the market, especially as we are talking about more housing in single-family neighborhoods, right? Really making sure that we're all in it together in terms of being able to build housing? So that's actually one of my questions. And, you know, maybe that's in that next, next right work, but I do think that as we're building housing, you know, how we make sure we actually are getting housing as well as affordable housing is important. We've been talking about it for a while.
And I think it's, it's more, I think it's more appropriate in the next, next right work, because it's looking at it as a package, and it's also looking at it in the context of the comprehensive plan, like Emile was saying. So it's something that would come out of that effort, and kind of getting back to Councilmember Robertson's point, it's something we would be doing an upzone for in order to put those in place, so it could be part of that discussion before we actually approve an upzone.
So it could be within the allow higher FAR for residential?
It could come up in that discussion, yes.
That staff would come back as part of the choices we might have with incentive versus mandatory?
Yes, it could be part of that discussion. If the council would like us to include that, then that's something we could look at as we work on that particular item.
I'll just clarify that the notion behind allowing higher FAR for residential was to make residential uses more competitive with commercial uses in transit-oriented zones, so that you wouldn't have a lot of parcels flipping to commercial, and that you'd have people thinking, God, I can pay a bit more for this land, and I'm a residential developer, I'm going to win that parcel, and I'm going to develop it as residential. So it was about incentivizing residential. You can couple that increase with mandatory inclusionary zoning, because you're giving an increase at the same time that you're creating a requirement, but at that point, it will not have the incentivizing effect of creating more residential supply that you, or it will weaken that effect, depending on the ratio of how you do it. Does that make sense?
Okay, I see. And then I'm wondering, maybe this isn't going to fall into here, but I, but I'm listening to my colleagues, we, I think we are trying to understand the timing for these different policies, when the policy work will come back, when we would work on the comp plan and the code, so that we can more, we can better understand when any of these are actually going to be done, so someone can actually submit an application. Is that something we can get in the, of information, add a couple of columns so we can better understand what we're looking at? Because I think we've each collectively asked a little bit about timing, and we're all scribbling notes, but it's kind of hard to read all the notes at this point.
Well, I'm going to propose something and see what we think. What I'm hearing is there's a consistency to not eliminate the commercial linkage fees, but to put it back in the pot, that may be something we analyze later, decide whether we want to implement that or not. But I think what's rising to the top is, one, removing barriers to micro housing, which you recommended. Two, allowing for higher FAR in residential, which you recommended. Three, reducing permit fees, which you recommended. And then there seems to be a majority of people who would like to add number 10 as your fourth item, which is simplifying the permitting process. And in addition, there was an appetite for doing some kind of a capacity analysis, and that might be in the budget process, I don't know. That would indicate, you know, what we might be able to do to increase our capacity for the next best work that we go through. And I had one more. Yes?
Can you also hear support for the missing middle?
How would you like to define the missing middle, Councilmember Barxdale?
Encourage the ADUs, ADUs, duplex, and then, and so forth, and adding what Councilmember Robertson had added to that?
Well, I don't know that. Well, I don't know that I see a majority who want to do it in the first four, batch of four. I think there's an appetite, but we can vote on it, so we'll see. Okay? But I'm just throwing this out here to see if there's any comments on it, so. I'm not quite yet, I'm not, but I will in a second. So, why don't you make a motion? Make this motion, and then we'll discuss it, and we can change it, we can amend it, we can do whatever we want.
All right. I move to confirm the recommended list of next right work actions to undertake in the next 12 to 18 months to supplement ongoing housing work. That list comprised of: remove barriers to microhousing, allow higher FAR, reduce permits, remove the commercial linkage fees, simplify the permitting.
Don't say remove that, because we're just not going to add it.
Okay. Backburner, the commercial linkage fees, simplify the permitting process, permitting process, and add capacity analysis.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So, let's go ahead and.
Read that over again, because there was some confusion there.
Okay, so he's suggesting that we put forward as our next best work, removing barriers to microhousing, which is one of the original recommendations, allowing higher FAR and residential, which is another original recommendation, reducing permit fees, which is another original recommendation, and adding number 10 on our second, the sheet with the blue on it, which is to simplify the permitting process and expedite permitting with specific time goals for processing, and to do a capacity analysis. And that.
And backburner the.
That means that we are putting, I don't think we need to say that, but that does mean that that's what we're doing with the, we'll come to that, back to that. So there's a second on that motion. So Councilmember Stokes, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, I think it's going in a good direction. This has been a good discussion. I still, I just hope that this, I mean, again, these are, we're doing some low, low-impact things that are also, don't take a lot to do, and we're leaving a lot of things that have high or medium impact, that we're not including those. My concern is not just doing things that look kind of like we can do, can enact or whatever. I want to see actions that actually make a very significant impact on the housing issue. And I'm not sure these four are going to, they'll be good for us to do, but I don't see them as being as strong as we could do. And I just don't want to, you know, four years from now, look at this and say, gosh, it's gotten ahead of us now, and wish we'd have done these things in the past. It's confusing at this point, because I'm not sure.
We're going to review it in 12 to 18 months.
Well, even in 12 to 18 months.
Go four years without us doing another.
And so, but are we, the other factor, I mean, to make my vote, would be, are we, we aren't saying the staff's going to quit doing these other things, right?
Correct.
These other things to do.
All the green things, continue on.
All right. It's a reasonable, it's a reasonable approach.
Okay. Deputy Mayor.
I'm in favor.
I am in favor as well. Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks, I'm in favor, and I just wanted to clarify my comments about the missing middle, is, I think that I was adding to the things I wanted them to consider in the comp plan process, because I think we can't do it ahead of that, I think it has to go in the comp. I wish we could do it ahead of it. If the capacity shows we can do it ahead of it, I will be, we'll be supporting that motion later, but that was, I just wanted to clarify my comments on that.
I agree.
But I support the motion, thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Barxale.
I support. I think my hope was that staff would at least take a look at, seeing what, what part of that one they could expedite, so can I.
Is that in the capacity analysis perhaps?
No, I support the capacity analysis, but it's looking to see what part of this item they could, as part of scoping, they could accelerate.
So you would want to move that to the vote tonight, is one of the things tonight?
I think that would be the case, just for them to consider it as part of scoping, what they could do on that item.
Is there, is there pros and cons? Can you give us the pros and cons of doing that?
Well, I think we can add one or two items to scoping. We wouldn't be able to do all.
Can you include the separate, the ownership aspect of it? Can you include that in that scoping?
The separate ownership?
I don't mean to say.
It's the full line, it would be the full line item.
Yeah, it would be the full line item.
So we'd look at number four and what it would take to accelerate that outside of what we're already doing through the comp plan.
Right.
So that would be something that we would scope and bring back to you.
Right.
But it doesn't mean we'd be able to do all five things.
And we don't need to put that in the motion, we can direct them to do that outside of motion. Mayor Robinson? Yeah.
I'm sorry, if I could also add, we will need to look at scoping for simplifying the permit process. That is quite a big task, and we are in a current development cycle that is really taxing all the people that would be tasked with that work. So we will scope that and bring that back, but I think we need to put a little time into what the effort is on that.
I kind of looked at the list, and it felt like if we removed one of them and put it on the backburner, as we say, and replaced it with that, that was a fair trade. Are you saying no?
It's a different trade?
Yeah.
I'm not sure it's a fair one, it's just a different group of people that are involved, and at this point in time, we have one of the highest development cycles we've ever had, so we, I'm just a little, I'd like to scope it out.
I'll take your advice on that.
Thank you.
So number 10, and the, what number, the number four, for scoping. So we'll make an amendment later, but we'll go on with Councilmember Lee. Do you remember the motion?
I don't know, you just added a few things, number four, number 10, I don't know what.
Okay, so let me clarify. It's, the motion is to remove barriers to microhousing, which is one of the original recommendations, to allow for higher FAR, which is one of the original recommendations, and to remove permit fees, which is one of the original recommendations. Then we added number 10, which is to simplify the permitting process, but we've just been advised that perhaps we should ask staff to scope that out before we include it in the batch. So we have two things right now that are being asked to have scoped out. One is number 10, which is simplifying the permitting process, and the other one is looking at DADUs and ADUs with the homeownership component as well. So those two for scoping, but moving forward with these three to start with.
Very good. I support that, except, you know, I would not support including commercial linkage fee.
We don't, we didn't put that in the motion, so you don't need to say that.
To remove it.
It's not in the motion, we're not.
Not in the motion.
We're not advancing that forward right now. And then the other thing was to do a capacity analysis.
Yes, we do need to do that.
Okay.
That's how we can determine how much we can do, right?
Okay.
I think the key is to come back to us, and we'll, if you have a capacity, if we don't, this is for the council to decide, right? We can give the city manager lots of money to get it done.
Okay.
But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I think like Liz says, if this is the highest development cycle we've ever had, it's all the more important that we accelerate this work as soon as possible. So I support the capacity analysis, I support expediting item four of those green items that we're working on, and I believe that.
Not scoping it? You want to move right into?
Sorry, well, item four is the ADU, DADUs, right?
Right, and we've advanced that to scoping, as well as number 10 to scoping. And you're saying that you want to put it in the, amend the motion to include it as the recommended first work?
Yeah, well, actually, it's already in, let me clarify, it's already green, which means it's already in the works.
Right. Do you want me to, do you want me to tell you the motion again?
I heard the motion.
Okay, okay.
I, what I heard Councilmember Barxale say is that that was the one we wanted to accelerate. The scope and the timing was, my understanding, simplifying the permitting process, so.
So it was, it would be scoping to see what parts of that line item we could accelerate?
Yeah. Okay, which could then include the C1 discussion we've been having, because that is part of the ADU, DADU, and townhouses, so I agree with that. The only comment I want to make, as I'm listening to where we're at, is, so now the only generate revenue for affordable housing, since we're removing the implement commercial linkage fees at this time, so what we're saying is that we are lifting up and act a housing levy as the revenue generating source. I just want to be really clear that that's what we're talking about, because I know that some of my colleagues have, you know, raised concerns about raising taxes and levies, and so if that's what we're talking about, then I just want to be really clear that that's the only one that's sitting here that's left, that is green that we're working on.
I have staff clarify that, that one line item, it would be important. It was shown as green, and the note there was ongoing discussion at the ARCH board. So if we look back at the 2022 ARCH work program, there is a discussion of ARCH facilitating conversations with member cities on identifying and exploring dedicated revenues, and it could either be at the local or regional level. So I don't want to overstate what's happening, there've been a couple discussions just at the ARCH board, they're very early discussions, so I think that's what was meant by the green light, line item on that, is we do have our ARCH exec board representative participating in some early discussions that were part of the ARCH work program. If any of those were suitable for the city to actually talk more about, that would be a future discussion.
Well, I think we're gonna, in order for us to build to the scale we're talking about, you know, we just had our 1590 discussion, but that's not nearly going to help get to the level of housing subsidy that's likely going to be needed to build to scale. And so I agree with all of these pieces, and I also understand that we are supposed to be seeing the numbers from Vision 2050, and for the 35,000 housing units, what AMI levels they're going to be, because I think that will help inform us about where we want to focus on which AMI is the most in need and the gap, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor, do you want to make an amendment to the motion?
Senator Mayor, I'll amend that we move item number 10 from the next right work to scoping with number four.
Can I ask a question? I'm happy to second it, but I have a question.
Can you second it?
I'll second it.
Okay, go ahead.
If it's needed. The things that we're moving ahead on the next right work, you're going, the first thing you're going to do is scope them, right, and bring them back? So I don't think the amendment is needed, because it's going to be scoped anyway. And what we, but what we do need an amendment for is to add the number four to the scoping. That's what we need an amendment for, not to add.
Okay, if you're good with that, I'm fine with that as well.
So could I make a substitute amendment, Ben?
Yeah.
I would make a motion to add number four to scoping, and to, and in place of the amendment that Deputy Mayor just made.
Mayor, Mayor, Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just, I want to make sure that the staff is clear where we're going on this, I just, because, you know, we're going to have to bring something back, so, and maybe once we're done with this, if you could restate, and if the staff could restate what the council is voting on, that we could actually come back and deliver on this, okay?
Maybe before you vote, we'll.
Thank you.
We'll restate, yes, thank you, the city manager. Would you like me to do that now?
Sure.
Okay. So what I'm hearing from the council, and please correct me if I miss any of these, so we will come back to you and scope the work for the following items. Encouraging DADUs, ADUs, duplex, triplex, quadplex, and separate ownership, remove barriers to microapartments, allow higher FAR or unlimited in residential, to incentivize residential, simplify the permitting process, expedite permitting for goals for processing, and reduce permitting fees for affordable housing projects. Those are the five that I have.
And that's the five that I have. And I mean, I was trying to agree on three that we wanted to move forward, and I was trying to give you a list of what we wanted you to scope, so we could consider later. And now we're just giving you everything to scope.
Well, you're giving us five items to scope, and if they're, so for those three that were already recommended by staff.
Yes.
If you, if the council agrees, we can come back with the scope for those ready to launch.
I would like that.
And then the other two, you can tell us if you still want us to do those, because we may not be able to do all five.
There's one, and that's the capacity.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry, and the capacity, yes, that's another one. So that's six items.
So that's what I'm trying to do, is to vote on those three that are three of the four that were recommended, to give you what you, two more that you would like, we would do a scoping on to decide how we advance that, if and when.
Okay.
And we're also asking you to do a capacity analysis.
So we would be doing the three.
Yes.
That we recommended, and we come back with those ready to launch.
Yes.
And then we would scope the other three items, and thank you for the capacity, I didn't forget that, I just didn't look at it on the list here. So we would also scope those other three items, and then you could tell us which ones, which one probably of those that you want us to do in the next 12 to 18 months.
Exactly.
Okay.
Which is why I do want to do.
So maybe we.
Go with Jared's motion.
So maybe we need a brand new motion.
It's not, that is the motion.
That is the motion, okay, that's fine.
That is the motion. Councilmember Lee.
I need a clarification. You said you're going to do three, then going to do scope, how many, and two, what are you going to do?
We're going to, they're going to advance forward, or present it to us.
What are they going to advance forward?
The three that they recommended, which is, one, remove the barriers to microhousing, two, allow for higher FAR, and three, reduce permit fees.
Okay, that's what you're going to do.
Yes.
Thank you.
They're going to scope two things, or actually three, if we include capacity analysis as a scoping item.
Right.
Okay.
And the capacity analysis may give us a way to do the other two.
Right, exactly.
Or more.
Or more.
So we're really voting, we're voting to move forward on those three things that I just said. So are you ready to vote?
Mayor.
We need to vote on the amendment to the amendment.
Well, I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw if it's causing confusion.
No, 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 well, yeah, withdraw the substitute, yeah. Okay, but we need to vote on your amendment.
Okay, yeah, so Councilmember Robertson, you're withdrawing your substitute motion?
Yeah, I thought it was, I thought that was the right way to go, but.
So there still is an amendment on the table.
And I'll withdraw my amendment.
No, no, no.
Okay, well, no.
We liked your amendment.
Oh, okay, well, then we'll keep that amendment then.
Do you want to read it again?
No, just.
I just thought we could do a new main motion.
We're just adding number four.
Okay, Charmaine.
Yeah, so Deputy Mayor's amendment is to move item 10 and four into scoping. That is the amendment that's on the table, whether you want to withdraw or not.
Vote on that first. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Is the capacity analysis in the main motion?
Yes.
It is in the main motion, yes.
Thanks. And the main motion now is?
Oh boy. So confirm the recommended list of next right work comprised of: removing barriers to microhousing, allowing higher FAR in residential, reducing permit fees, simplifying the permit process, and completing a capacity analysis.
No, simplifying the permitting process is in the scoping.
Okay, gotcha.
So his amendment changed the first one. So, so what we're, we voted to amend the amendment, so now the amendment reads to: remove barriers to microhousing, allow higher FAR, reduce permit fees, as are three that we're advancing, to number 10 and number four, in and out, I'm like losing my mind, and capacity analysis. Scoping, thank you, that was the word, I forgot. And that is the amendment before us, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Mayor, there was, if you would like to give any direction on the C1 Phase 2, that could be a very. could be a very brief discussion. If we wait too long on that, it's going to miss this year's annual
Do you want to have the discussion right now?
Yes.
Okay, do it.
Okay. So there was a request made from Councilmember Zahn to look at, from 300 feet to multifamily or commercial for qualifying properties to extend that out to 500 feet or 1,000. If you extend it out to 500 feet, you add three additional faith-based properties, Calvary, Lutheran, Cross of Christ, and First United Methodist. Two are in Lake Hills, one is in Northwest Bellevue. If you extend it out to 1,000 feet, you do add five additional faith-based properties. I think the staff recommendation would probably be to go with the extended out to 500 feet and add three, and we could incorporate that into an ongoing process that's already with the Planning Commission without upsetting anything we've done over the past hour and a half or so.
Okay. Is there a consensus to do that? Is there a head nods to do that? Are you okay with that?
I'd like to have 1,000 feet, but I understand that if, if the staff recommendation and my colleagues only want the 500, then
Not certain I am yet, to be honest.
Okay. Okay. Well, then maybe, I know time is of the essence, so, well, I'll let you speak to your wanting 1,000. I'll let you speak to why you don't want to do it, and you, maybe you can get your answers and figure out what, how you want to go. Go ahead, Councilmember Zahn.
Well, when I, when I think about this particular topic, and we, we talk about watch heads to arterials and transit in that quarter-mile increment, so it makes sense to me that we're looking at a similar distance of the 1,000 feet and being able to create that, that space for housing along with our faith-based, you know, neighbors. And so, and, and that's not to say that these faith-based properties are all going to raise their hand and say they want to do this, right? This is just saying that we're allowing for that possibility now instead of pushing it out much farther down the road because development is happening, and I think that to the degree that we need to create more housing more quickly, this is one tool in our toolbox that I think we could be leveraging a lot more.
And I'm going to speak to why I wanted the 500, and then I'll let you speak to your, your questions. I would like to limit it to 500 because in that next 500, which is closer to single-family neighborhoods, I want to see if there's any way that we can incentivize housing for older adults. Because we have so many older adults living in single-family homes that really don't have any place they can afford to downsize and stay in their neighborhoods, and I hear this all the time from the community. So if I, if we just allow that development, there's no guarantee we're going to get something suitable for older adults. So I'd like to give a little more time to that last 500 feet to see if we can come up with something. But I'm fine with the first 500 creating opportunity, so. Okay, Councilmember Robertson.
I missed, when we talked about C1 last time, I was out of state at a wedding, so I just want to, sorry about that. I wanted to make sure that I know what the proposal is. So the C1 strategy allowed properties that are on an arterial within a half a mile of frequent transit and within 300 feet of a jurisdiction where multifamily or commercial are, or jurisdiction, other properties where they're already permitted. Those would be allowed to upzone. Is that right? And so what, are we changing the 300 feet to 500?
Yes.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, the question came up when we launched it on May 9th.
Okay, yeah.
So it was a what-if question of going to 500 or 1,000 for that last criteria about proximity to commercial or multifamily.
Have we done a heat map on that to show what the, or a
It's only talking about Liz, two more, no, three more
Three more parcels.
Church properties that could be
Three more church properties if it went to 500, and how many if it went to 1,000?
Eight.
Another five.
Yeah, I haven't seen the map on that, but, and what was the discussion on May 9?
Why did we stick with 300?
Because we hadn't had time to think about it. There wasn't much of a discussion.
Yeah, I, I kind of would like time to think about it, but, but 500, I could probably go for if the council wants to do that. I'd want to see a map and the impacts.
Well, and we're not voting on it, we're just asking
Oh, to bring it back? Okay.
No, actually, we wanted to direct staff to
Yeah, if we
Put it before the Planning Commission, let them decide.
And this, this, and this wasn't on our agenda tonight, was it?
Well, it's a little decapitated.
That's a question. I haven't had an answer yet. Was this item on our agenda tonight?
It wasn't written up in the memo, it was under the overall umbrella of next right work ideas that were part of each of these process.
I didn't pick up on this at all. Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Zahn.
Yeah, I was going to say, because you weren't there on May 9th, this was brought up on May 9th, and what we were told is that we weren't going to consider it there, but that it would be brought back as discussion during the next right work, which is tonight. So that's why we're having this conversation. And I believe that as you looked at that map, the other part of this was, when it came in May, it had to be a church property that was on an arterial. So what we're talking about is actually if you're within X number of feet of an arterial, that is walkable, right? So then that creates an opportunity to have more, more housing. So I think that was, that was part of the, the restriction is that if a church wasn't actually on the arterial, then it didn't matter about the 300 feet because it wasn't eligible, correct?
Yeah, this is more about the, the distance from the faith-based property to essentially higher zoning, so multifamily or commercial.
Right.
So that's the, that's specific criteria.
Yeah. Thank you for providing.
Okay, I'm going to let Deputy Mayor speak to his questions.
Well, it just feels a little ad hoc tonight to be discussing that. I'd also like to see, well, see a heat map, and on the other hand, you mentioned two of those properties would be in Lake Hills. Earlier tonight, we were talking and some of the oral communications coming forward about equity and the distribution of, yes, they, it may not, you know, those faith-based properties may not take advantage of it. However, that could have a significant impact to the Lake Hills neighborhood, so I'd, I'd like to see how close they are, what the potential impacts could be to that immediate vicinity there. So, yeah, it, I, I would just like to see that before, before making a decision on that, that could greatly impact that immediate community right there.
Okay. It's funny because it feels like such a gift to the community, my, my.
Well, it is, it could be, yes, absolutely, but there are other impacts than that. I would also like to know, can we also specify those three additional faith-based properties? Could we specify that if they did take advantage, that it would be for senior-related housing?
We haven't gotten to that point in the, in the code part of it yet.
Right.
But if there, I mean, if there is more information that you or other council members, we're, we're happy to bring that back. We just wanted to note that it was, we did want to give an update on our thoughts on this as part of the next right work, and knowing that we're getting
Right.
Close to the August break, but clearly we don't, if there is a desire for more information, we can get more information.
But this is going to come back to us, but no matter what, right? Because going to Planning Commission is going to come back to us. So I'm fine then, having the Planning Commission take a look at it, but please pass along my concern about the, the distance, and then when you come back with all the properties, that, that would be great to see as well, and then as well as look at the senior housing potential.
Got it.
I think that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with that. We've been looking at, people have been talking about the senior housing for some time, particularly in, in Lake Hills and other places, so this would be a positive thing, and it will help us on affordable housing.
Okay, so I, we just need to head nods here, right? Is everybody feeling comfortable about asking the Planning Commission to entertain the notion of 500 feet from multifamily? Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? I, I am trying to understand why 1,000 feet would not be possible for seniors' housing?
It's not that it's, no, no, that's not what we're saying. So we're looking at just opening it up to housing in the 0 to 500 from multifamily, and from the 500, 1,000, I'm, I don't want to go there because I want to actually have us look at what kind of incentive we could put in to get affordable senior housing in that area. And putting this in front of the Planning Commission now does not get me there.
Okay.
That could be any kind of housing.
Okay, because you, because there, that's another separate discussion that then has more incentive. Okay, that makes sense to me.